Hi, everybody can, everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah, it's always kind of uh. Hi Wendy, hi Mary, Scott.
Hi, I don't know where we went.
So I, I don't know if I can see everybody on the screen. So if I don't see them on the screen, I assume that they're not on yet.
I only see two members mayor. You and um Suzie and Connie's joining now.
How do I do to the screen that has? I can see everybody.
Mister Mayor, Mister Mayor, in the top right corner of your screen, it says view. If you click that and then click gallery.
Alright, there you go. Good job Scott. Alright.
Two years of teaching remote Mister Mayor.
All in A D, you're a high tech guy. Alright, so how Suzie. Connie. Alright, could I just ask everyone as we go through this meeting, I guess be a little bit patient and flexible because I think everyone like me. Trying to figure out how to do the zoom thing, even though we use a minute.
Folks, do we know where that background noise is coming from? Doctor Hall, can you tell where the background noise is coming from?
I can't tell um when the meeting starts, so I generally mute everyone. Superintendent Skinner, so um it'll only be the members that are alive. As well as you and the mayor.
Um would you like the public speakers admitted now or wait until the motion that they're speaking for is up?
Uh they should be admitted now because it's a public meeting. Yeah, I tell um when the meeting starts, so I generally mute everyone. Superintendent Skinner, so um it'll only be the members that are alive. As well as you and the mayor.
Would you like the public speakers admitted now or wait until the motion that they're speaking for is up?
Uh they should be admitted now because it's a public meeting. When the meeting starts, so I generally mute everyone. Superintendent Skinner, so um it'll only be the members that are alive. As well.
Having the love for tricking and some natural talent gives you a head start. But it's just the start. The real behind is what goes on behind the scenes.
Uh this is not a roll call, but I don't know if I can see all the all the school community members on. Line, I just wanna see um here's I see Connie, I see Dominic, I see Jackie. I see Suzie. Stacy. There's Eileen on yet. Eileen. Eileen's not on yet. Okay. Mister Superintendent, do we, did you hear anything from Eileen if she joining us or?
She'll be here.
She'll be here. Okay, we just wait one, one more minute. So I left the gavel in the chambers, I don't have my gavel uh for the zoom, so. Yeah.
That's a good thing.
Okay, I think, I think we we uh said Thomas, yeah, I think my swastika and Eileen can. Thank you in us when, when she's on.
Mister Rossi just joined.
Well, okay. I, I do, so we have to have everybody here. Right, let's uh if you come unmute everybody, Joe, uh let's start the meeting, we'll start with a salute to the flag. Um salute, uh any way you can from home. I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
United States of America and to the republic.
Public for which it stands.
Our nation under God.
Under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, roll call please.
Mister Doherty?
Here.
Mister Lay?
Here.
Miss Martin?
Here.
Miss Thompson?
Here.
Mia Chow?
Here.
Miss Chune? Miss Chune? Mister Rossi?
Here.
Seven present.
Good, thank you, Madam Secretary, and I wanna welcome everyone who's joining us. On a zoom meeting, everyone's watching us uh from home, I believe L T C is able to record us on zoom and. Uh put on TV to watch us during the meeting as well. Um we do have.
Recording in progress.
Uh we do have a long agenda um to go, go forward, but. Um this one item on the agenda that should be um quickly and there's a gentleman on zoom. That has another engagement to go to right after this meeting, so. If um on the rule fifty three A, if I get a motion to suspend the rule by. Miss Ma to take item nine point four. Um out of order, second by Miss Doherty. Item nine point four. Is the Lowell High School Athletics Rule Fifty Three waiver request. Um at this point, um do we have the speaker on this to talk about this? You will see Mister Scott Willett on zoom.
Yes, Mister Mayor, I am here. Uh good evening, everybody. Briefly, just a little background on this um rule and this waiver. The committee has really the final say, uh we've gone through the procedure to this point. And um it will be, you know, the authority of the committee to, to either agree or disagree with it. But the background is that um. Many schools, including us, have uh been forced to uh allow some. Participation in some of the athletics, we've used it um several years now in ice hockey quite successfully. Uh we've also used it in tennis uh for both the boys and the girls. So I uh put this on there in the Merrimack Valley agreed and the M I A A and everything, like I said, this is the last step in the process. Um this would be for the golf team. The uh girl swim team and it would be for girl soccer at the JV level. Last year, we were unable to fill a JV team. Um so we're hoping in those three sports to backfill, if you will, the, the roster at, at the bottom of the roster with just a couple of kids. Um and that would help us field full teams uh in those sports. Uh so long as the committee would go along with it, but that's the general uh basics of it and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Before I open uh the floor to the, to the members, Mister Superintendent, anything else to add on this matter?
Thank you, it's a obviously a specialty item related to sports and M I A A rules. Um as, as uh Mister Willett spoke, the school committee has, has a final decision making on it and so I defer to the committee.
Oh, thank you, um any comments or questions by any of the school committee members? So if you could raise your hand and then I can do my best to recognize you. On the screen. Um I don't see any hands in the motion to prove Rule Fifty Three. Where request by Miss Ma, second by Mister Lay. Madam Secretary, roll call please.
Mister Doherty?
Yes.
Mister Lay?
Yes.
Miss Martin?
Yes.
Miss Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Miss Chune?
Yes.
Mister Rossi?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Uh thank you Mister Willett for being here to speak on the program. We now will go back to where we left off on agenda with. Uh section three, special order of business, uh three point one is the introduction of interim chief school officers. Uh Mister Superintendent, uh we do have a registered speaker here, so I'm gonna allow the, the speaker here same time. Um his time um to go first. Uh Madam Secretary, please call the registered speaker.
Steven Perez?
Hello. Oh. I don't think. Yeah.
Mister Perez, you're muted, you need to be unmuted.
Okay, how's that?
Perfect.
Okay. Thank you very much, uh may I begin?
Yes.
I'd like to start by saying that I work in a very competitive field. It often occurs that many of my coworkers are up for the same promotion. We know only one person will get it. We do our best, we congratulate the person who gets it and we move on. We do not undercut each other. That is why speaking out in opposition of the promotion of Wendy Crocker Robarge to. Position of interim chief school officer is counterintuitive thing for me to do. I also took the night off to work to be here uh because it's that important. My name is Steve Perez, I've been a downtown Lowell resident for nearly thirty years. I'm a father of two teenagers who attend Innovation Academy Charter School in Tingsborough. But if my kids attend I A X, why am I here today? I've been approached by half dozen parents, which is closer to a dozen at this point. And teachers, former teachers from the Pine, asking me to speak out about my experience at the Pine School. One teacher who encouraged me to speak was afraid for their career if they told their stories, so they chose to remain silent, but asked me to speak. I think it's unfortunate that advocating for children is a scary thing to do. My children were students at the Pine Art School. For the first two years, it was an okay experience, it was not the upgrade and the special academic experience I was told it would be. When we transferred from the Riley, uh but it was fine, most of the teachers were good teachers, it was perfectly adequate. Then my oldest daughter became quite ill. She spent a large chunk of seventh grade at Boston Children's Hospital. We arranged for a five oh four disability plan with Miss Crocker Robarge and Miss Lang. The plan included sending homework to my daughter via Google Classroom and sending a tutor to help her catch up on missed work. Neither of those things ever happened. I have email after email of me asking Miss Crocker Robarge why my child was not being sent her work and she would often not reply. Weeks passed and we heard nothing. Then I went to a parent teacher night at the school and my ti- my child's teachers all had the same questions. Where is your child? Why is she absent? It became clear that none of the teachers I had had any idea that they were supposed to be sending work to my daughter. Not one teacher knew that my child was sick, not one teacher knew of this five oh four plan. It's not just a dereliction of duty, it's illegal. At this meeting, it also came to light that my daughter, who among other conditions suffers from endometriosis. Was told quote, we all get painful periods, get back to class. Within weeks of that disgusting comment, my daughter was in an emergency surgery on her uterus. In order to try to right the ship, we requested a meeting with Miss Crocker Robarge and guidance counselor Katie Pelton. When we arrived at the meeting, there was one person I did not recognize. One of them introduced themselves. As a truancy professional, I found this perplexing, my child was not truant. At the meeting, Miss Crocker Robarge said she had no idea my daughter was sick. This could most kindly be categorized as untrue. Miss Crocker Robarge said my child's absences were unexcused and talked about my child repeating the seventh grade. I was astonished. This truancy person then accused me of giving our child school refusal syndrome, which explained, was explained to me as. Us conditioning our child to not want to go to school. My child was sick, Miss Crocker Robarge knew it, and now somehow we were being told we had dug something wrong as parents. But one must wonder why a straight A student who had faithfully gone to school for her entire academic life suddenly had school refusal syndrome. And why was our other daughter still in attendance every day if we were poisoning their minds against school? Blaming us and accusing us made no sense because it is not true. A short time after this meeting, I went to the office at the Pine and asked for a copy of the five oh four plan. It was given to me and it was blank. Miss Crocker Robarge never even filled it out. There were sections of this document, which I have, which were that was supposed to be signed by teachers and never was, the document was empty. Rather than have my daughter repeat seventh grade when we withdrew her from Lowell Public Schools. And homeschool her until we had found a home at I A X. I was not gonna let this child repeat seventh grade. I A X had been incredible where the Pine fell short. If you're wondering how this child who was kept out of school by bad parents is doing today. She's attending Cornell University on a full scholarship and has received citations of merit from senators, the governor. And Representative Vanna Howard. Wendy Crocker Robarge gets zero credit for this. I want you to know that I filed a complaint with the State Board of Education who told me that because we withdrew, they could do nothing but that our case was compelling. I also hired a lawyer to send a demand letter to inform our intention to sue, but Christine O'Connor, the then solicitor, never replied. My lawyer felt we had an excellent case. However, with ongoing medical issues, he couldn't afford to sue because my wife had to quit her career to become a homeschool teacher. This situation devastated us financially. I know I'm, I'm up against my time, I'm almost done. I will close by saying that myself and many others steadfastly believe that Wendy Crocker Robarge doesn't deserve this promotion. As one parent contacted me, said she can't get this job, she's the liability. I will also say of Mister Liam Skinner, when one has a job with interim in the title, they are auditioning for the job. Because their body of work is small, every major decision they make will come under tremendous scrutiny. One of his first major decisions is to nominate a clearly divisive figure to be interim chief schools officer. You might have flown under the radar if you had picked almost anyone else. If you insist on doing this, you may be doing this to your own detriment. Also, next time Mister Skinner can answer an email or a phone call, I wanted to do this in private. But I was forced to do this here in front of everyone because nobody ever replied to me. Thank you for your time.
Thank you Mister Perez uh for being here to speak on the matter. Madam Secretary, is there any other registered speaker?
That concludes the speakers into special order of business.
Thank you, Mister Superintendent.
Thank you very much, um. Uh I, I do want to acknowledge Mister Perez's attendance and, and what he spoke about. Um and, and I want to acknowledge that it is obviously and clearly very genuine and very heartfelt. And I have nothing to, to suggest that would refute anything that you've said, Mister Perez. Um. I, I, I'm actually grateful that you, you mentioned at the end that I'm an interim superintendent and I wholeheartedly agree. That it, that as interim, I am auditioning for uh, you know, for, for, for the permanent roles, so to speak. Um and I'm, I'm, I'm aware of that. Um I also am aware that this is a very big decision. Um and I have vetted this candidate, Miss Crocker. Um more so than I had any other case in my career in terms of hiring. I have uh referred back to superintendents as far back as Miss Franco. Jean Franco, who was very supportive of Miss Crocker, um and, and I won't go through all of them, but each of the superintendents from Miss Franco on forward. Um has spoken very, very highly of Miss Crocker's work. Miss Crocker's own teachers. Uh all, all teachers in Lowell at this point are offered an anonymous survey. Each year, um we call it a house survey, the results are available to people, to, to, to everyone in the public. Uh one feature of that is a um, a rating of the leadership of the school. And uh I, I, I don't have all the results in front of me, but I assure you that I've reviewed them and they are um extremely high. Uh and this is ratings of her own teachers of her um uh abilities and, and, and her leadership at that school. I don't refute what Mister Perez has said, I'm however. Very confident in Miss Crocker, uh Miss Crocker's been working with us uh for the last month or so. And has uh really done amazing work just in her first month alone. We will talk a little bit later in this meeting about Leadership Academy, which is a forum for principals uh professional development. Miss Crocker's taken a lead role in that and it has been phenomenally successful. She, among principals, is a uniquely. Popular choice, I, 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 I don't refute you uh Mister Perez, I just have no reason to uh to. It, it, as you mentioned, maybe in my own interest, it would be easier to pick a, a candidate who is not uh, you know, bringing you to this meeting. But I don't have good reason to do so, sir, um this has been a uniquely popular choice in, in terms of principles. Um and I believe also in terms of the general public, though I can acknowledge your concerns at the same time. Um I want to go forward, please, and, and introduce to the committee uh Miss Crocker Robarge, who has my full confidence. And uh whom I'm, I'm very grateful for her work throughout the summer uh up to date. Uh may, may I have Miss Crocker uh Robarge introduce herself?
Mister Mayor, I think before that, I'm sorry to interrupt um interim, um interim super, interim superintendent. Um I was just wondering if there are any members of the committee that would like to speak to Mister Perez before that's done.
Well, uh well, well, we will allow that, Miss Thompson, I'm gonna have. Miss Robarge introduce herself and then once she's um started speaking, then we can. Make comments and questions after that. So through Mister Superintendent, uh Mister Wendy Crocker Robarge, introduce yourself please.
Thank you Mister Mayor, uh yes, my name's Wendy Crocker Robarge, I've spent the last twelve years here in the Lowell Public Schools. Uh serving as the principal of the Pine Arts Magnet School and that has been the greatest privilege of my career. Um to take that school from where we started to the incredible place that it is today. Uh with a full complement of arts instruction, um a lot of innovative practices and some pretty. Impressive results to support the work that has been done by a massive team of highly talented educators there. The opportunity to take this work and the innovation that I seek in, as a progressive educator. To a level that may impact the entire district moving forward is an exciting opportunity for the year ahead, so I thank you for it.
Uh wonderful, um I know that Stacy would like to make comment, after Stacy, uh I'm sorry, uh Miss Thompson goes. Have the other members, will I just raise your hand uh first so I can call and keep. Uh as much order as possible, Miss Thompson?
Thank you Mister Mayor, excuse me, first of all, I'd just like to thank Mister Perez, I know that. Um your decision to come here was not made lightly. Um I know that, you know, involving something that's very personal, which you shared, um about your daughter. Something that you battled with, but I thank you for doing that. Um I do know that it's challenging to be the person on what people would consider. The, the non prevailing, I think this is the word that you used, side of, of a situation. Um but again, to your point, there were many people, um and, and this is not, you know, new information, there are many people that felt. Both ways about um Miss Crocker Robarge, um. I just wanna thank you for, for stepping out in the way that you did, I'm very glad to hear of your daughter's success. Um and, and I'm no shield with parents like you, you all. Um behind her, she's gonna be a thriving, continue to be a thriving success, so I just wanted to thank you, I know that it's challenging. Um but again, also know, just know that you do have the support of people who um. Are invested in, you know, every single citizen, every single person having a voice. Um regardless of whether it's a popular one, so um I just wanna personally thank you for, for sharing information that you didn't have to. Um I'm getting like lots and lots of calls and texts right now as this is happening, so clearly it did make an impact, so thank you.
Now the member who would like to speak, please raise your hands. Mister Rossi?
Yes, I'd also like to thank Mister Perez for speaking out, I know this is a very sensitive issue. For your daughter, um and I am so proud of how far she's come. As a parent, I don't think any of us want to have to reach out about a sensitive issue like this. It is something that is very. Heart wrenching, right, it's, it's like, do I believe my daughter, do I believe the doctors or am I believing a principal and attendance officer? You know, so medically, there was an issue, medically, it was documented, but yet you weren't believed. And to me, as parents, as taxpayers of the children in the city of Lowell. I appreciate you speaking out because it is about our kids in the city of Lowell and, and what they're getting most of and that. No matter what, we all need to feel validated, so thank you Mister Perez.
Any other member, Mister Lay?
Thank you Mister Mayor, um uh Lido, I just wanna say Mister Perez that uh. Thank you for coming out here at this meeting and speak about it. Uh and congratulations with your daughter, uh she went to a great school. Uh and uh yes, uh you as a parent uh deserve all the credit for her success. And uh um. I just have a short question whether. Why you wait until this late to, to come and speak, uh why didn't you come uh earlier uh when we had the, the meeting? Uh in the chamber the other days, a few weeks ago. Uh so, but anyway, I just wanna say uh good job uh for, for, for your, your daughter going to a very prestigious school. You're muted.
Can I answer that question?
I'm sure Mister Perez.
Um. I, there's been a problem with the email system at City Hall. And I actually emailed to speak at the last session. And never heard back from anyone and when I spoke to uh. Minerva, forgive me for using her first name, I don't remember her last name. Uh she told me she received no email from me. But I had emailed three different times. And by the time she told me I could speak, the meeting had passed. So she told me to make sure I was here today. So I did, I did what I could and I thank you all, I appreciate your time.
Any other member who would like to speak? Um I don't see any other hands up. Um I also thank you Mister Perez, um you're a valuable member of the community. Um and you know, as we move the city and school district forward, we want everybody. Uh to be part, part of the progress and we should not leave anybody, anybody behind. Uh yours and your family's experience um had part after the school district um to, to do better. Um to, to make much more efforts to make sure that we include everybody. And we thank you for coming uh too much to speak on this matter.
Thank you.
I think everybody had the opportunity to speak, uh we don't need to take a vote on this, this will be taken up in the permission to intersection. Uh with that, we now will move on to uh the next item on the agenda, which is three point two. The introduction of new principals, introduction of newly appointed principals, um I'm gonna just have uh Mister Superintendent. To introduce uh these principals by names, Mister Superintendent?
Thank you Mister Mayor, um. We feel very fortunate that uh in, in Lowell, we're able to attract at the, the level of. Candidate. It's that we have. To our principal positions, there are uh it, it, people with, with great experience. We have a candidate who's come up to our ranks and has been promoted from an assistant principal, we have people uh who have great experience outside of Lowell but have uh great ties to the community. So in no particular order, but uh perhaps just in the order that I, I'm seeing them on my screen. Um uh Ms Huntley has been, Ms Catherine Huntley has been chosen as the principal for the Lincoln School this year. Ms Huntley has experience as a principal in Westford and uh Sitewatt. And we are delighted to have somebody of her great experience who's joining us for the Lincoln School Principalship this year. Ms Huntley, would you care to just make yourself known?
Sure, thank you very much, um it's really a privilege to join the Lowell Public Schools and to work under the leadership of Superintendent Skinner. As the Lincoln Elementary School Principal. Over the, actually interim principal, so I'll make that quick clarification as well. Um over the past few weeks, I've had the opportunity to meet some of the district leaders and colleagues at the leadership training. Yesterday and today, and I'm looking forward to tomorrow and I have to admit, I was. Absolutely delighted to learn that one of the district's commitments for learning time and space is to find joy in the work. Um I speak often about balancing rigor and fun. I really believe in bringing that fun to a school for students, for staff, for families, and I think we can accomplish great things when, when we are really finding that joy, so. I feel certain that I'm in the right place, I'm so happy to have finally landed here, I actually followed my daughter. Who's teaching in the district, so often it happens the other way, daughters follow mothers or. So often it happens the other way. Daughters follow mothers or, uh, uh, but everything she's had to say and everything I've come to find in the district has really pleased me. So thank you so much for this opportunity. I look forward to the year ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Huntley. Um, we also have with us, uh, Jeff Haynes, who, um, uh, is, uh, has been an assistant principal at the Bailey School. And we're thrilled to have the opportunity to sort of promote from within when we have such a fine candidate as Mr. Haynes in our midst. He stepped up this summer when we're looking for a principal at the Washington School, and I'm delighted to introduce him to you, Mr. Haynes.
Hi, how are you? Good evening. Um, I am thrilled to be taking over the Washington School. Um, I'm totally looking forward to the opportunity to welcome families, uh, welcome back staff and welcome back students to the Washington. Um, I've had the great opportunity to be the Bailey for the last nine years. Um, we've had a great opportunity to create an amazing culture of learners at the Bailey School, and I look to continue that, um, at my time at the Washington.
Thank you, Mr. Haynes. We also, um, are hiring a new principal for the Pawtucketville Memorial School, and that person is Mr. Michael Monroe. Uh, I met Michael Monroe for the first time a couple of years ago when I was Chief Schools Officer. He was highly rated for a couple of, uh, principalships at that time. And, uh, was, I was delighted to see that he was a candidate again this time. And we have chosen him to be the principal of the Pawtucket Memorial School. Mr. Monroe?
Thank you, Superintendent Skinner. I, I'm beyond excited. I was persistent in my, uh, my efforts to, to land in Lowell. I spent the first fifteen-ish years of my career in the Boston Public Schools. Uh, started off as an AmeriCorps volunteer. I was placed at a school over in East Boston, the East Boston, uh, part of the neighborhood of Boston. I was in McKay School, K through eight. Uh, became a teacher the following year, a school leader for six years after that. Most recently, a school leader up in Newburyport. Uh, I, I absolutely love what I do. I think as educators, we have the absolute best job in the world, and I'm honored. I feel honestly blessed, uh, to be the new principal at Pawtucketville Memorial. I grew up in Haverhill, uh, where I currently live with my family, my twin boys Charlie, Joey, my wife Courtney, who's a math teacher at, at Whittier Tech. Uh, and although I'll always be a Hilly, um, uh, I, I, I'm excited to become part Lowellian. I think I said that correctly, Lowellian. Uh, and I promise to always do my best in service to this city, uh, and its students. And I want to personally just, uh, say thank you for the, the, the support and the welcoming personally to Superintendent Skinner, um, Wendy, Deroth, Dr. Hall, Matt McLean, the, the former, uh, principal at Pawtucket, Dan Shanahan, the assistant principal at Pawtucket, uh, and everybody else. It's just been so gracious and, and, uh, supportive in me transitioning into this new position. I'm very, very excited. Thank you.
Ms. Monroe can consider himself lucky that our athletic director, uh, Scott Ulette, has left the meeting at this point. But, uh, you could, you better be prepared when you come to our Thanksgiving football game. Uh, okay, so, uh, one other hire who I'm very excited about is somebody I've been recruiting for a couple of years because he's been a standout principal of a middle school in Fitchburg. And his name is Matt Steinberg. I don't believe Mr. Steinberg was able to join this meeting tonight, but, um, he is the new principal of the Wang School. Um, some of you may know the Steinberg name. He is part of a Steinberg family that hails from Lowell. He was looking for an opportunity to move back to town. And as I said, for the last couple of years, I've tracked his progress. Um, very, very fine hire, and I'm thrilled that he's agreed to come to us and be the Wang School Principal. And one more, I would like you to, uh, know about Laurie Lang, who is stepping up to be interim principal of the Pine Arts School now that, uh, Ms. Crocker Roberge has moved up to central office. Ms. Lang is with us. She obviously is, uh, from town and, uh, is, uh, renowned and respected as an assistant principal. And again, we're thrilled to bits that she has, uh, taken the, the opportunity to step up into the principalship role this year at the Pine Arts School. Ms. Lang?
Good evening. Thank you, Liam, and thank you, everyone, for having us here. I'm, I'm super excited and humbled by being asked to step into some big shoes. Wendy Crocker Roberge is an amazing principal and has been my sidekick for the last eleven years at Pine Arts School. And we're, we're doing some really great things over there, so I'm excited to take the reins. Um, I, like I said, I, I'm, I'm humbled to serve both our staff, students, and the Pine Arts community, and I look forward to, uh, this school year. So thank you very much for having me here tonight.
That's it for our introductions. Um, thank you to the committee members for welcoming our new principals, our new leaders to, to their new positions.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Any comments or questions by any of the school committee members? Uh, I don't see any, uh, hands up. I too want to, uh, congratulate all, all the new principals. Uh, as, uh, you have mentioned, uh, it is a blessing to be an educator and to have the leadership role, um, at the school. I'm sure all, all the teachers, the parents and the students, uh, they gonna, um, welcome you with open arms and, uh, you are a blessing to our school district. So, uh, welcome. Uh, with that said, um, congratulations again, and we now move on to the next section. Uh, just one more thing, I believe this, uh, before, I don't want this opportunity to go by. Uh, Ms. Hunt, you can take over the Lincoln School. Uh, I know that's a great playground, it's gonna be, uh, in, in the works, uh, pretty soon. So I look forward to be, uh, part of that development. Uh, the next section on the item is, uh, the minutes. Um, the minutes are the, um, special meeting of the Lowell School Committee of Wednesday, July nineteen, two thousand twenty-three. Uh, four point two approval of minutes of the regularly scheduled Lowell School Committee meeting of Wednesday, July nineteen, two thousand twenty-three. Uh, the next one is a special meeting of the Lowell School Committee of Wednesday, July twenty-six, two thousand twenty-three. And the last one is a special meeting of the Lowell School Committee of Wednesday, July twenty-six, two thousand twenty-three. Any comments or questions by any of the school committee members? Uh, seeing hands up, um, need a motion, um, to?
Motion to accept them all?
A little more by Ms. Mon, second by, uh, Ms. Dory. On face, I, possibly not, I have it, motions carry. Uh, the next line item is section five, permission to intern. Five point one, contract approval for intern chief school officer, Ms. Wendy Crocker Roberge. Uh, Mr. Superintendent, would you, uh, lead us into this discussion?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. I believe we also have, uh, at least, uh, some registered speakers on this item. And if they are in presence, I would suggest that we allow them to speak before we go forward.
Madam Secretary, please call the registered speaker.
Joy Sorota?
Uh, Ms. Sorota, we're having problems hearing you. That's all issue. Um, I'm not sure it's on your side or to the side of it's, um, on us, Mr. Hall.
Maybe turn your volume up, Joy.
We are still not able to hear you, Ms. Sorota.
You're muted again, Joy.
You're muted.
We can hear you a little bit, Joy.
Yeah, I, I think maybe if you get closer to the, the speaker of the device that you say.
Okay, so, um, hi, I'm just, yeah, I'm actually the administrator at this school. And I have worked with Wendy for the last eleven years. And I'm not usually a public speaker, but I wanted to talk to you. I felt it was important, uh, to give her support, to be hiring the chief.
I'm not sure if we have, I hear echo. I'm not quite sure if my two devices on at the same.
I just move on, and I'm sorry. I don't know how to fix this, so.
Joy, do you have? Joy, do you have the meeting playing in your room? That's probably.
What? I'm sorry. Could move on to the next person?
Actually, I can hear her now.
Yeah, I can hear you now, Joy. No, can't hear you.
You don't can hear me, I can not. Um, she's, she's hired a reason in the school, and I just have to say she's amazing. Um, mentor, team player, leader, colleague, and friend. Her door is always open to parents, staff, anybody who wants to her, even on personal basis. Um, she's built a strong, um, title. Well, we're in the school, it's school, school, school site council and teacher teams, administrative teams, everybody's working together. Um, family, um, and so I have to say that the last class of sixty, I don't leave the pine will round any confidence from the years at the pine. They're really pretty small, um, we're actually at twenty-nine, it's sixteen, I believe, the last class. Where there's some kindergarten on to the range. I hope that they be serious for me and spreading Wendy Crocker Roberge is, uh, new and first school, chief school officer. Thank you, Peter.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Sorota. Um, we pick up only two or three words, uh, all good words. Uh, maybe if you could email, um, Madam Secretary, what you just said, so that way we can get it on, on the record as well.
Okay.
Madam Secretary, the next speaker, please.
Erin Hebert?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and school committee members. My name is Erin Hebert, and I'm speaking in support of the appointment of Wendy Crocker Robers as interim chief schools officer. This is a bittersweet moment. Wendy has been an incredible asset to our school's principal. And personally, I can truly say that my life would not be what it is had it not been for Wendy. I've been at the pine for ten years. While I was initially hired as a library aide, Wendy saw my potential to be something more, that I was meant to be in the classroom. Through her guidance, support, and gentle nudges, I became a paraprofessional, successfully completed my bachelor's degree, and was hired into my current role as sixth grade math and science teacher. And I'm about to complete my master's degree. I've never had a supervisor or mentor so invested in my personal growth as Wendy has been. But that guidance and support does not stop with me. Wendy saw the potential of what our school could be and what our students deserved. Through her passion, staff collaboration, and innovative thinking, we have truly lived up to our arts name. Beyond our core educational curriculum, our students have the opportunity to develop confidence and essential twenty-first century skills through our arts and project-based STEAM programming, such as fabric arts, three D printing, instrumental music and dance. These opportunities and experiences and more make the pine a place where students and staff want to be. While it would be hard to fill her shoes as principal of the pine, her knowledge, innovative leadership, and dedication will now benefit all students and families of Lowell. Thank you.
Katie Pelton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the school committee. My name is Katie Pelton, and Monday I will begin my ninth year as the guidance counselor at the Pine Arts School. It is the greatest pleasure to express my support for Wendy Crocker Roberge to be appointed to chief schools officer for Lowell Public Schools. Working at the pine has been a wonderful experience. I have learned and grown professionally from a student intern to the role I currently have, and I owe so much of my success to Mrs. Roberge. I have had the privilege of working closely with Wendy for almost a decade, and I have witnessed firsthand her exceptional leadership qualities and dedication to education. She embodies integrity, compassion, and dedication to her staff and students. She is one of the greatest assets Lowell Public Schools employs, and each school in our district will benefit from her appointment. While principal of the Pine Arts, Mrs. Roberge consistently demonstrates an unwavering commitment to academic excellence, student well-being, and fostering a positive and inclusive learning environment. She proves time and again to be an effective and transformative leader who has moved the Pine Arts to success. Mrs. Roberge leads by example at the pine, fostering a culture of professionalism and collaboration. She proves mentorship and support to all who work in the building and all of Lowell Public Schools. One of Principal Roberge's greatest strengths is her visionary approach to education. It is Mrs. Roberge who has worked tirelessly incorporating extensive arts education for all students at the pine. She poses a deep understanding of public education, best practices, and successfully implements innovative programs that have positively impacted academic growth and development of her students. While I will be incredibly sad not to have the pleasure of working with her each and every day, I wholeheartedly support her move to this new position and cannot think of anyone better equipped for the job. She will hold herself to the highest expectations and expect each and every one of us to do the same with her continued support and dedication. Thank you.
Suzanne Cromwell?
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Mayor and school committee members. Uh, my name is Suzanne Cromwell. I'm a Lowell resident. And my son, um, has been a student at the Pine Arts since he was in kindergarten, and he is now entering fourth grade. And I am here to speak with, um, with, with, I'm overjoyed to speak in, um, favor of this, um, this wonderful position that has been offered to Ms. Crocker Roberge, um, as chief schools officer for Lowell Public Schools. Um, I, we selected the Pine Arts Magnet School for their, um, you know, for their incredible arts curriculum, um, and their, just the, the leadership that we, that we saw there even before we had our son enrolled. And we did our homework and we, um, talked to other parents and, uh, talked to other community members in Lowell. And I have to say that my family and my son, um, have not been disappointed. We have absolutely, um, found the school to be everything that we wanted it to be. And this is just a, a big testament to, um, Principal Roberge's, um, efforts and her championing the arts and what she has done there to transform that school and bring it to what it is today. I, I just see it in the students. I see it in the, um, educators that are there. I see it in her administrative staff, that she has just elevated everyone. Um, um, and it, it really is such an honor to be a part of that school community. Um, I serve on the PTO as well, and it has been such an honor to serve alongside, um, Ms. Crocker Roberge, um, on the PTO as well. Um, I just am really thrilled. We will miss her. We will miss her, um, at the Pine Arts community, and I'm just really thrilled about this new appointment. And I just went to wholeheartedly, um, let the committee members know and the committee know that myself, my son, and my husband, that my family are in full support of this appointment. And we just want to say thank you to everyone. Thank you.
Rebecca Stasivac?
Good evening, Mayor Chow and the committee. Um, I'm here to speak as a pine parent and as a member of the school site council. And, um, I've spoken before about my support for, um, Mrs. Roberge's appointment as assistant superintendent, and I'm gonna reiterate that. But I will say today that, um, I've known the Perez family longer than I've known Pine Arts. And, uh, I'm gonna talk about my experience as a pine parent, as a school site council member. Um, and none of this is meant to refute or dismiss anything that the Perez family has been through.
Uh, Ms. Stasivac, if I could interrupt, um, I'm not quite sure what, um, you're gonna say, but I just want to remind you that we are, um, speaking on the, um, approval of the school officer here. Uh, it's not meant to refute, um, uh, pie, uh, speaker on a different matter. So I ask just to not, um, you know, refer back to the original, the richer speaker before. Should be still right now. Thank you.
Right. Um, so my point is that I've had a, a great experience at the Pine Arts. And, um, on many different levels, and I'm gonna talk about some of the specifics. One is that, um, as a parent, I do have a child, um, with a specific medical issue, and we have been received with, uh, it's been received with a lot of help, uh, nothing but encouragement and understanding and a complete willingness to explore what needs to be explored, answer all the questions, and get on board to help. I've had nothing but help and understanding on that front from, um, top to bottom with the staff there first. So that's been my experience. Um, my experience on the school site council with Ms. Roberge has been amazing. Um, I'm very privileged to serve there, and I've watched what's, what Mrs. Roberge has, has developed over time, which was absolutely no accident in creating the incredible programming that we have now. Um, so a lot of the skill that she employed in doing that, I think, is very specifically relevant to the position. Um, so a lot of the skill that she employed in doing that, I think, is very specifically relevant to the position. That of assistant superintendent, helping other principals realize their goals. She has a great way of recognizing talent and fostering that. And, um, encouraging it to the point where you're, you know, a staff and, um, the school community. Will discover that they can do even more maybe than they thought. Um. She also. Uh, in creating her vision for the school was absolutely informed by her commitment to the arts. But I also know that watching this develop over time, it was always focused on benefiting the students and benefiting all the students. The Yale students, the CSA students, the students who are struggling, the students who excel. And they were always at the center of creating this vision. So I don't have a doubt that there was ever a commitment to every student at the school. Um. I also watched her in her commitment to her vision for creating all of this at the Pine Arts. Um, remain focused, um, in a way that helped her be very resourceful, developing relationships. Um, and partnerships with the school and, um. Uh, your organizations that can help, that she knows will help, um. Oh, and not just, you know, suddenly realizing, oh, we're gonna need this. I better go find somebody who's gonna help us with this. She would develop relationships over time with organizations so that when we needed something, they were already there and ready to help. Um, and I think this kind of skill and the ability to create the larger vision. While considering the entire community and to leverage all the resources is the kind of thing that we want all our principals to be able to do. And I also think that she has a very clear understanding that every school is going to have their own set of needs and vision. And I think she's. A great asset to helping all the principals be able to realize what they would like to see happen for their community. Thank you.
You asked that, Ms. Stasivac. Uh, any other speaker, Madam Secretary?
No, that concludes the speakers under five point one.
Wonderful. Before I open up the school committee members, uh, Mr. Superintendent. Any, any comments, any further introduction?
No, thank you. The, the, the item on the agenda that we're, that we're, uh, referred to is, has to do with the contract approval for Ms. Crocker Robers. And, uh, Dr. Hall is the person who is responsible for putting that contract together. Um, I believe using some, uh, using the input of, of the committee. So I don't know if it's appropriate, Dr. Hall may, uh, have a remark, they can, or, uh, uh, or else we should move forward with that item.
Sure, um, Dr. Hall.
Bye. Yes, Mayor, uh, the temp, the, the typical template, um, for assistant superintendents was used. Uh, to draft this, uh, the committee, uh, did, um. Vote for some edits which were made, but this document represents, uh, what the committee, uh, offered for a contract.
But any comments or question by the school committee members, please raise your hands so I can see them. Ms. Thompson.
So I'm just wondering not, and, and this is potentially as an additional aside, but. I would really love to have a full scope of what the C, the CSO role is going to be. What it is. Um, historically, it's been one thing, but I would love to know the scope of what is being done. Or what the intention of being done is in this role. Thank you.
Question to the CFO, Ms. Thompson.
I'm sorry?
Was there a question to?
No, 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 it was just really wanting what that is, what, what the current scope of, of, uh, the responsibilities are. Um, if we could get that sent over. I don't know if that's a, I don't know if that's a Dr. Hall thing, or I don't know who holds that.
We'll start with, um, Mr. Superintendent.
Sure. Now, Ms. Thompson, if it's okay with you, I'll take responsibility for responding to that in, in a couple of different ways. Um, one is, uh, that I, I'd like to, as we go through the year, report out to the committee about actual. Authentic work that's happening from central office and from central office figures, including, uh, the, the, the CSO, CSO. And, and so an example of that on tonight's meeting, uh, has to do with this Leadership Academy professional development. That Ms. Crocker Roadberg has taken a, 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 a big hand in. And she will report to you on that later on in this meeting, uh, also on school opening. So that's not all of what Ms. Crocker Robers has been doing. By the way, she's been introduced, she's been, uh, recruiting and hiring all of the principal candidates who we've met earlier in the meeting. Uh, the, the Leadership Academy I've referred to as well as school opening. These are not all the things she's been doing, but, but I will, I'd like to give you, uh, a written outline of, of the job description and an indication of, of what the work is. But also through this meeting and throughout the year, make regular updates from each of the cabinet members on the work that we're doing.
Ms. Thompson, you're set.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's entirely fine. I would just, yeah, so if I could have what is being, what's being done historically, what you're intending, that'd be great. Thank you.
Any other school committee members, please raise your hands so I can see them. Mr. Lay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will, I just wanna let, uh, you know that, uh, I will continue my, uh, uh, my, my no vote on this position. Um, I have nothing against Ms. Wendy Robert. Uh, but, um, I will continue my, I will, I will. But I, I think, um, she will get the job anyway and congratulates to, uh, to you for getting this position. However, I will continue to, uh, to vote no on, on, on this and, uh, looking forward to, uh, uh, working with you in the future.
Any other committee members? I don't see another hands up before I ask for a roll call. I just want to make a quick comment. Uh, this, uh, the appointment of Ms. Robert, um, I have heard from so many different people. Had a lengthy discussion both with the residents and families and also with my colleagues and Mr. Superintendent. I believe Ms. Robert is very well qualified and is recommended by the superintendent, um, as we, um, went through. With the, with the selection of new leadership in the school district, we want someone that is ready to go. That compromise stability, that can work with all the principals as well as with the entire school district. And I am in full, uh, support of, of Ms. Robert for this position. I think she will do an excellent job, as you hear, um, the people speak in favor. But, um, as, um, the, uh, my colleagues put before, also listen to everybody, um, not everybody can be happy with, with organizations. Uh, we do our best to make sure what's passed for the district. Anything that we are lacking, um, you know, we, uh, we do, uh, the public, we do have our best interest and our commitment. So make sure that we, we listen very hard to all your concerns. And we will bring everyone, every family, every child, uh, with us and make sure that the school district move forward together. Uh, with that said, uh, Madam Secretary, please roll call.
I need a first and a second, please, Mayor.
Motion, uh, to approve of the interim chief schools officer, Wendy Crocker Robers by.
I, I'm, I'll make that motion.
By Ms. Dory, second by. Ms. Martin. Madam Secretary, roll call please.
Ms. Darty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
No.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi. I mean, you're muted.
Sorry, I, no, no.
No. Five yeas, two nays.
The motion passed. Congratulations, Ms. Robert, um, uh, welcome. And I know you introduced that earlier. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Like I said, it's, it's my privilege to, um, join this, the district ranks of, uh, central office leadership. And, uh, this particular superintendent's cabinet, uh, Mr. Skinner and I have worked together for a very long time. We were often thought partners, um, and like-minded leaders. And, uh, I know that not every leadership decision that comes down our way is going to be something that a hundred percent of people get on board with. Um, but I, I do dot my i's, I do cross my t's. I'm very, very thorough in my work. And I'm always happy to have any conversations with any individuals, um, about any questions regarding myself, my work, my history or my plans. To bring a lot of, uh, uh, vision and high standards to the role of chief schools officer. So I will not disappoint too. Thank you.
One again, uh, thank you. If you had a meeting in a chamber, you would hear the applause from the, from the school committee members, but again, congratulations. Um, with that said, we now move on to the next item, five point two. Permission to enter August sixteen, two thousand twenty-three. Any comments or questions on any of the items under the permission to enter? Ms. Martin?
First, I'd ask if we could separate out the, uh, CTI item.
Okay. Passed by, by Ms. Martin to separate the CTI item, um, second by. Mr. Lay. On the face I post a note, I saw portions carry. Um, with that out of the way, um, any comments on the other items, Ms. Martin or anybody else?
I, I did have a question on, um, on the first page, the daily group. Could you tell me what that's paying for?
Uh, Ms. Martin, that's for the, um, location where the Dr. Janice Addy Day School, um, is located.
So is it, i- i- is this just, uh, amending our regular?
It, it, it's exercising an option here.
Cause my question would be where it's coming from, the modular classroom rental budget line?
I would believe that's a scripness error, but I'd have to defer to Ms. Turner on that.
For Ms. Superintendent to Ms. Turner?
Yes, Ms. Turner, please. Can you, uh, refer to the, the daily group item on the permission to enter and help us understand, uh, modular classroom rental that it's under?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I'm, I'm, I'm confused by the question. What is the question? It's under the same line that it's been under for years. Um. The daily group.
Billy Joe, on, on the permission to enter document. Under daily group LLC, it says funding provided by school department budget, uh, modular classroom rental.
Oh, yeah, we've been historically charging it to, it, there's just one line called modular classroom. And I know, yeah, that does seem confusing, but anything that we're leasing, we charge to that line. I mean, we could make a, a separate line for the, um, day, you know, the daily school group. Which is, um, the, you know, the, the, um, the Dan, Janice eighty. Day school. We could make a separate line item for that, but right now we've been historically using that line item.
So do we charge central office to that line item?
Yeah, we do all, both the central office and the Janice Day, um, Janice Day. I keep saying Janice Day, but yeah, Janice Day, um, J- Janice eighty, I, you know what? I'm, I'm confused because I'm thinking of the Janice eighty when she was there at the, um, central office. But yeah, both of those are charged to the same line item. They're both charged to that lineup item, but if you wanted to create another line item, we could.
Okay, well, I, I'd probably say we can defer that maybe to a, a finance subcommittee. I, I do think that our light items should say what they are. Um. I mean, and particularly during a time when we're actually, I mean, we're in the process of purchasing module classrooms where we'll be using that line item specifically. It, it's certainly confusing.
Absolutely. And for the last, um, you know, like when I, when I started the job, I've been continuing to use these things. But this is part of what we've been doing the last couple of years is to try to clean up. And this is just another hint of, uh, need to clean up this particular item. I have not noticed this myself. But this is something that we've been trying to do is clean up. And this would be, this will be added to my list to clean up and improve the chart of accounts. So I'll add that and I'll make sure. Even if we just use the same account number and just call it leases. You know, like, you know, like the central office leases. Even that, like, these are the type of things that drive me crazy. So I, I applaud the fact that you pointed out another one. You know, because I find them all the time and it drives me crazy. So I'll, I'll just either ask the, um, city hall to change it to central office leases. If the coding is, um, reman, you know, like reflects leases. If not, we'll add another account to make sure that we don't, um, continue making this. Um, confusion.
Okay, okay, thank you.
No problem.
So, Ms. Ms. Martin, you're okay to vote on this item and then, um, Ms. Turner will deal with, uh, city hall on that matter. Um, any other comments or questions on a permission to enter? So what we'll do is we'll do a roll call on, on all the items, uh, excluding the CTI item. And then we'll do another, uh, roll call vote, um, for the CTI items. Uh, Madam Secretary, please do the first, uh, roll call on the vote, uh, together excluding CTI items.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask, so we okay with, um, Ms. Martin, are we okay with the, um, the daily group as it is now?
Yeah, I mean, I think that it's, it's, it's the rental cost that we, you know, for a building that we've been using for a number of years now. Okay, so I'm fine with that. If we can work out the kind of line item stuff afterwards, I'm fine with that. Thank you.
By Ms. Dory, uh, second by Mr. Rossi, Madam Secretary.
Ms. Darty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mayor Chow? Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Okay, uh, the next motion is on a CI, seat item on the permission enter. Uh, motion by Ms. Chun, second by Mr. Rossi. Madam Secretary, um, any comments or questions before I do the roll call? Uh, here now, roll call please.
Ms. Darty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mayor Chow? Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Six yeas, one absent.
Thank you. Uh, the next, uh, following items are the motions by the school committee members. Uh, we start with six point one. Is a motion by Mr. Rossi request superintendent to post new health. And physical education curriculum on all parents' website. And have questions and answer sessions for a variety of cases, second by Mr. Lay, Mr. Rossi.
Sorry about that. Um, yes, I'm not sure if everyone is aware, um, that the. Health curriculum and physical health standards have finally changed according to the state and with the new governor for the first time in about twenty-five years. And where there are some really great points that I love in the whole curriculum draft. There are some areas of contention that I, I have heard from parents with various religions. And they would like consent to opt out of their child's learning certain subjects. Um, or certain areas in the curriculum, especially pre K through two and then three to five. So I would just like for Lowell Public Schools to make this available, this draft curriculum available. On the Lowell Public School website and as well as make a clear comment section. That I believe parents are able to comment on their thoughts. Until August twenty-eighth on the curriculum and what they think. But I also think it's important for Lowell Public Schools to think about a way for students to opt out of certain areas that may. They may not want their child exposed to at a very young developmental age at the same time. Thank you.
And other comments or questions by, uh, other members, Ms. Dory?
Uh, thank you. And I, I don't have an objection with this motion. I think I just want to remind the committee that, uh, we're in the process of revamping our own program. You know, obviously we take guidance from the state, but we also are going to develop our own program. Uh, because we have been so behind and we were trying to get something at the middle school level. As I know, Ms. Desmond has been spearheading that issue, getting a task force of our, our health teachers. Now every middle school has a health teacher certified as a health teacher. So I, I just would like to be able to remind everybody, we're working, um. On this issue and I would be expecting some sort of curriculum meeting, subcommittee at some point when. When Miss Desmond's team is ready to, to share that with us. But I just see that as a, an addition to. Uh, what Miss Del Rossi is asking here is really looking at what the state has put together, if I understand her correctly. Uh, so I'm not against that, but we are also spearheading, uh, to do a lot more than we've ever done. And I would hope. By having certified health teachers in every middle school, we're going to be able to make some significant progress in this area. But I'm not against, um. You know, providing the information that the state's putting out there, although I do see that as more. If people have questions or concerns about the state. Uh, requirements, wouldn't that be better going through the state? Um, I, I, that's just a question. Thanks.
Okay, can I? That?
Mister Rossi?
Yes, so, uh, regardless, our own local, low, low health curriculum is going to have to come from this. State of Massachusetts curriculum. And there's many areas within that state curriculum. It is still in draft form. So I think it's important for low public schools to publicize it and allow the parent feedback section to be posted as well. So parents can give their feedback to the state about it because they're giving that option. And then Lowell will do whatever they want to do with it. But I believe there needs to be. Consents in order for students to opt out of certain areas because some are. Not so developmentally appropriate for students at certain ages or a. Not so, um, of, there's a lot of cultures that don't, do not, are not ready for their children to learn about certain things just yet. Um, so I, I think that it's just important for parents in the city to be able to. Give the state their opinion because the state has given them that option. And then Lowell can do whatever they want from there, but. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? There none on the favors, I post a note, I save it, motions carry. The next motion is also by Mister Rossi. Request superintendent to report on protocol of student arms. Protocol of student on student bullying reports, second by Miss Thompson. I believe you have a registered speaker. Madam Secretary, please call the speaker.
Marie Perez.
Good evening. My name is Maria Perez and I live at one forty-four Hampshire Street in Lowell. I'm here today in front of all of you to address concerns I have with bullying in the low public schools. My nine-year-old child is a victim of bullying and physical assault at his school. And nothing was done to properly address the situation. Bullying is an emerg, um, emerging serious problem in schools resulting in physical and emotional problems in children. My nine-year-old child was physically assaulted twice by two different classmates. The first assault happened on two fourteen, two thousand twenty-three by a classmate whose mother is also a staff at the school. The classmate punched my son so hard in the stomach that it took my son's breath away. Afterwards, my son had severe stomach pains that I had to take him to the emergency room. The second assault happened inside my child's classroom by a different classmate. The classmate repeatedly slapped. My child on the back of his head four to five times to the point that my son has severe headaches. For several days. The next day I called the police to file an incident report of what occurred. These are not minor. Issues, but rather reoccurrences of physical attacks on my child. After the first attack. When my son got home, he threw himself on the floor crying out of frustration because. He was being bullied and assaulted for no reason. The prin, the principal was notified of the incident and did not properly handle the situation. I had to go down to the school department in hopes they were able to help me. But all I got was quote. If it's that bad at his school, then change him to a different school. If this is the way the school department handles situations, then I think everyone should be properly trained or fired. Because of what occurred with my son at school, my child no longer feels safe. There has to be some change. Children are supposed to be, uh, supposed to feel safe at school. Also, there was no separation in policy for my child and the child that assaulted my son, which increases anxiety. Needing, and he needed counseling. There was a lack of confid, confidentiality that I witnessed firsthand. Sorry. Sorry, I just, I have it all written down. More needs to, uh, so my closing statement is that. More needs, I demand more to be done, not only for my child, but for all those children who are being bullied at the low public schools. If you don't fix the problem, then you condone it. There's no other, there's no other word for this. This is, is getting ridiculous. I'm very, I'm sad for my child. I'm frustrated because every time I ask for help, nobody's helping me. So I do demand something be done. Thank you.
Mister Rossi?
Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Perez, for speaking out. I know how difficult it is, um, to see a child act out and. For them maybe not to really even be able to verbalize what, what's happening in this situation. Um. In many instances. In cases of bullying, it's. I've heard of, you know, in my own son's situation and he attends a great school, it's. Well, what did you do, what'd you do to cause that? Um, I just, I've talked of this before. That children need to know what bullying actually is, what it looks like. Um, our students at the very. Elementary level. I know we had this great presentation with Project Learn, maybe something to that effect. And even staff in their responses to. How they are responding, especially to parents, especially when a, a parent is bringing. A student to the hospital. I mean, my own child was spit on earlier in the school year and I refused to send him to school in, until. We had a meeting. And that wasn't documented correctly in, in the system. And until I, I demanded it because I was kind of done with it all. Um. There, there's a lot that's going on in regards to bullying and things that are not being documented correctly in our system. And I would like to see what we can do to do something to make that change a lot, especially. In these districts over in Senneville, in the downtown area, schools like the Merklin, it, these are underserved areas. That really need a lot of attention and, and they're really not getting them. And our kids are suffering. And a parent's worst nightmare is for their kid to not ever want to go to school. I hear my son say, I'm so happy to never go back to that school again. And it breaks my heart because he loved that school. You know, and it, it's just what's happening. And we need to nurture our children and we're not nurturing our children. And making them feel safe. So. I, I really would like to push for professional development in terms of bullying and nurturing for administrative staff. And in some ways student on student lessons. Um. If I could push for, for that in some type of emotion to move forward because it's all changed today. And it's sneaky and it's in times when kids are in line, when they're not in front of teachers. And so sometimes it's not always in front of a teacher's face that a teacher can report on it. But then what do we do? We need more training on that for our staff in terms of that. And what can we do in terms of that? So if I could put a motion forth on the floor to do. Um, training on bullying for staff and, and for student on student, I would appreciate that.
Uh, Mr. Rossi, uh, we're going to take a, a vote on your motion now. And all your comments and your concerns are being noted by the secretary. Um, I ask that the superintendent, um, administration, uh, as part of the call to include. Uh, what Mister Rossi just requested in terms of a professional training. Um, so that be, uh, encompassed report and protocol when it comes back to the school committee. When the motion response come back. Would that be okay with you, Mister Rossi?
Yes, yes.
Mister Mayor, if, if, if I may, uh. Uh, Mr. Rossi has another motion that also includes professional development that, that wanted to, just to point that out. I want to say to Mister Rossi that, um, she's given us an opportunity to, 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 uh, to, to respond and I welcome that. And, and so I, we, I, I think bullying is a serious issue. Um, and I, I take your comments very seriously. We'll, we'll be, assuming the motion passes, we'll be happy to report back to you in, um, in a thorough fashion.
Thank you.
Well, ask your two hands up, Miss Thompson and Mister Lei, Miss Thompson.
Um, thank you, Miss Del Rossi, for this motion. As everybody knows, um, one of the things that. Um, I'm probably most proud of is the dashboard, but the problem is, is that. Um, it has been relayed to me that there are ways that people go around the dashboard. Um, and so, for example, if a principal did not want, um, to. Go it out, they don't have to. They can kind of try to handle something in-house, but that does not allow for us to ca, to get or capture accurate full records. Um, and so. To, to your point about the training, I think there needs to be an accountability piece towards making sure that everything is, um. You know, is handled in the way that it was intentioned. Yes, it may take longer time. Yes, it may be more. But the point of that is for us to capture accurately what is happening in each school. Um, it can't be that. You know, people in, in administration are worried about what the school looks like as far as the statistics. Because again, it really is about the numbers and us getting to the root of it. Because at the end of it, I'm pretty sure all of my colleagues. Don't want to just keep getting the reports of the numbers. We want to make sure that we're getting to the root. Of what the issue is. Why is bullying prevailing in the way that it is? Um, and again, we did have on the dashboard. Um, we did have a few staff on student situations. So, um, we really may, need to get to the. To what, what is being recorded? Is it being accurately recorded? And then what is the process? Um, and I think trans, as, as far as transparency, there needs to be a specific process. That is written out that everybody knows this is what to expect. If my child is bullied, this is what is done. If my, um, if my child is bullied by a, a student, this is what is done. If my child is bullied by staff, this is what is done. Um, and I get people are like, well, you can't do certain things because of privacy rights and all that. We need to figure it out because these numbers have been upticking since the dashboard went into inception. And so for me, really important, I appreciate Miss Del Rossi coming, um, with this motion. Um, I'm clearly very passionate about it because. It goes into lots of things, not just physical, but you're talking about emotional, psychological. Um, you're talking about racism, discrimination issues that all get wrapped up into this bullying, um, kind of title or area. And we have to take a real stand on it and not just keep talking about it. So I appreciate your motion, Mister Rossi.
Yeah, can, can I?
Miss Doherty? I'm gonna go first and then I'm gonna, uh, go back to you, confirm the opportunity also. Mister Lei?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Um, just wanna, uh, echo what Miss Thompson just said, uh, and, and more. A good job, uh. Uh, Mister Rossi for, uh, attacking this, uh, topic of, uh, bullying. Uh, it is important. I support you with, uh, with this motion. And the motion, uh, the next motion, uh, about bullying. Um, uh, and may I also ask, uh. When you mentioned about training, could you modify this motion just including training? Let me just put the word and training. Uh, maybe that's, uh, uh, an, an easy way to, uh, uh, to, to put that subject in.
And training. But, but I think that it has to be. Kind of specified as to how administrators are.
Whi- whichever, that, that's fine. If you want to keep it separately, it's fine. I support your motion. So, thank you.
But I, another point I also wanted to, to bring up is getting a, a phone call. About what happened also is important. Uh, my son has processing issues. So a lot of times he'll come home from school and, and. He'll be in a really awful mood and I can't figure out what's going on. He said his day at school was fine. But later on, when we're going to bed, he'll tell me what happened on the recess or when he was spit on in school. And he did go and report it to somebody, but somebody forgot to report it to a principal or this or that. There's a lot of things that parents aren't getting told about immediately. And for our youth, we need to know, especially in today's society. So those phone calls. Are really important, that communication, because some of us have children with higher levels of need that. That need to talk about that right away and, and, and really process that and let, instead of letting it fester. Thank you.
Um, normally we don't have the, uh, the speaker speaker again, but, uh, this important topic, I'm gonna have the. Speaker go one more time, Miss Perez. Did you have your hands up, Miss Perez?
Sorry. Um, my, nobody reported, uh, that my son. Got hit or anything. It was, I noticed my son, because I know how my son is. He's a happy kid, but when. He was at dismissal, which he's a walker. Um, I noticed he was sad and then when he left, he started bawling saying that that kid punched him in the stomach really hard. And he was afraid to tell the teacher because there was other situations going on and that he was afraid that he gets yelled at. And my son right now is not. Is not mentally well. And I feel bad because school's starting and he just. And I wish they would have reported to me, but the teacher said she wasn't aware because. The kids were lined up outside the classroom and I don't know where she went. And she said she wasn't aware and that Uriel never, oops, I said my son's name, I'm sorry about that. Um, that, that she didn't, she wasn't aware and. Uh, from what I heard, the, the kid that assaulted my son said that he just pushed him hard. It was not a punch. But then when he went to the hospital, they said that he had internal bruising in his stomach. And I wish they would have just told me like at least, because Uriel was not fine the rest of the day after that happened. And I don't know how the teacher did not notice anything. And then the second incident, my, it happened in the classroom when my son was slapped. Behind his head. How can you not, the teacher did not hear that. How can you not hear? A kid being slapped. And again, the teacher did not know and my son was, um, during dismissal was when he told me again. And after that, his attendance went down. Because he did not want to go to school. It was always an issue. He would cry and. I was told by the counselor that if he doesn't go to school, he, she might have to call D C F on me. Because of my son, but I'm not gonna send him to an environment that he does not feel safe.
Backing Miss Perez, um, any other, um. Members who would like to speak? Um, I see your hands up again, Mister Rossi. Um, just in a, just a time, um, you, I. Uh, your points are well taken. Before I do the, the voice floor, I just want to add a quick comment that. Um, I want to thank Miss Perez, um, uh, their courageous to speak, um. On, on your son's, um, experience. And thank you, Miss Del Rossi, for making a motion, um. Miss Thompson, Mister Lei, and, um, I, I feel that all my colleagues feel it. Um, you know, bullying, I, I get, it's tough enough for, for a child, um, to go to school. It's a brand new world to them to learn if we knew. But, uh, to feel unsafe in an education environment, uh, my heart breaks, it leads to. A lot of issues as a speaker and many of my colleagues mentioned, uh, too many issues and. God forbid, uh, worse every time I hear of a young person, uh, losing their, their lives or just get worse, um. Uh, mentally, because it's not just physical pain, it's, it's mental, it's everything else. Uh, my, my heart just breaks. So if this is a very important, uh, motion. And I, I, um, have confidence that the school administration, uh, listen to all the comments and requests. And will take up these, uh, issues as, as serious as possible. Uh, with that said, um. All those in, in favor say aye. Oppose, oppose say no, the eyes have it, this motion is carried. Thank you.
Hey, can I just state for it to be, for teachers to enhance, have enhanced training on student, on student bullying? Just so it's clarified for the record.
Uh, absolutely. If that's okay, the, the members could vote already. If it's okay to, uh, have the same vote reflecting. What on Mister Rossi's mention of Madam Secretary could.
No, you would need a new second for this, Mayor Chow.
If I could just ask, isn't that in her second motion that we haven't gotten to yet? We, we talking about professional development at six point three?
Yes, man, that's a good point to Mister Rossi. Would that be, can I take the next motion?
Yes, yes, I'm ta, I, I apologize. I, I had to, I had to feed my dog.
I, I, I think we're all on the same page. Um, I, I think we support, uh, this motion and the meaning of it. And. And the things surrounding all all bullying in our uh school district. Uh, it doesn't have to be specifically uh what my colleague and the maker of motion stated, but everything that's related to to bullying. It should be reflected in the court coming back, including a professional development which uh we're gonna take up on. So the next motion is six point three is also a motion by Mr. Rossi. Request staff on student bullying reports as identified on the dashboard and have administrators. Have professional development day in order to best handle students on academic and social individual education plans. As to know, as to not overwhelm the student, second by Ms. Martin. Mr. Rossi?
Yes, and and this has a great deal to do with Ms. Martin's um dashboard where we see staff on student bullying. And so, I guess, um. This has to do with students who maybe are English language learners who have processing, who have individual education plans. And what is the best way for a administrator to go about asking a student about. Whether he was the aggressor bullying or what happened in a bullying situation. Um, that he was the victim of. Uh, there's a lot of students that just will shut down and not talk and will just feel like everything is their fault. And I think a lot of things from what I've witnessed gets bla- blanketed and it treats students. In a way that it becomes an interrogation. Um. So I would like for there to also be staff on student bullying and for staff to be more aware of how to approach. Students who are maybe showing aggression or showing signs of victimization. Um, because this is becoming a bigger and bigger issue every year.
Okay, you all set? Mister Rossi, any other comments or questions by any of the committee members? Ms. Thompson?
I just think I would like to add that um the training that you're talking about here, um. I think that it should be external, because I think every single person in the district should be able to sit and kind of take in information. As opposed to somebody taking away time from what their task is in um doing this, even if. And I get there are probably qualified people within the district, but I think that there's a time and a place to have everybody sit back and. Have somebody that is external that doesn't, um, you know, that doesn't have. Any knowledge of potentially what's happening, but can kind of cover a multitude of of things that that are going on. That's all I want to add.
There was a request to to amendment or to add to the the motion, Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Would it be acceptable by you, Mister Rossi?
Yes.
Okay, motion amended. Any other comments or questions? Um, feeling none on favors, I post say no, the eyes have it, motion is carrying. The next motion is six point four is also by Mister Rossi. Request superintendent to report on the number of cases of student litigation in terms of staff on student cases. So that we can get put a corrective action plans together and reduce litigation, second by Mister Lee, Mister Rossi.
Yes, and and yet again, this has more to do with the staff, with the um dashboard also. What we're seeing on staff on student situations and litigation that's being brought to the district. I I think that we need to be hyper aware of everything that's going on. I mean, as as. I think we are a very aware society. We're very aware of school districts because we have to be. But there are still situations going on that are bringing litigation to the city due to. How things are being handled with with students. And I think that needs to be every e- the cu- even from custodians to security guards and so forth. Because we need a protocol to say this is how this situation was referred to. And this this is the protocols and this person was restrained, even if it's a a security guard who had to restrain a student. You know, we we need guidelines to say we have these protocols, this staff member followed these protocols. And this is it, because we need to protect ourselves, we need to protect our city, we need to protect our kids overall.
Mister Mayor, is it appropriate for me to make a comment?
Absolutely, Mister Superintendent.
Thank you. Uh, Mister Rossi and committee members, I thought I should mention that um. Ahead of the meeting, I made an inquiry because of it. I was curious about this motion. And to my knowledge, there's I, there's no litigation of this sort, not and uh that we need to get a formal answer from the city solicitor. Because it's possible that cases have gone to the city solicitor that I'm unaware of, so I'm happy to follow up on this motion. But um i- i- I'm saying this in part because if we were to report back that there are no such cases. Uh, that that seems right now that that that's possible. And so I want Mister Rossi to be able to. Um, i- i- if if there's specifics to our specific cases or specific worries that you have, I'll run down each and every one of them. But I doubt that there's a litigation per se.
Well, all right, I mean, ma- maybe it hasn't become formal yet, but I've been informed of them from. Parents, so that this is where my motion came from, so.
Okay, if if there are specific cases, please bring them forward to me. I I I promise to deal with each and every one. Uh, but but my my biggest worry right now is that if you're aware of cases that I'm not aware of. We may not be dealing with them simply because we don't know of them. Uh, pl- please bring them forward and and we'll be happy to process them.
I I have emailed you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
More questions by any other committee members? I don't see any hands up. All in favors, I oppose say no, the eyes have it, motion is carrying. The next motion is also by Ms. Del Rossi, six point five. Request superintendent to increase number for school resource officers within middle schools, second by Ms. Dory. Mister Rossi?
Yes, we we get a number of the reports from the superintendent on a daily basis. And the majority are middle school students that are being transported to hospitals for mental health reasons. I think if there was a middle school officer within a middle school resource officer within these buildings. That got to know the kids, that got to talk to them, that they had an outside outlet, maybe not school personnel. Maybe this could put a decrease in into those mental health calls and sending students out. Um, there's a lot of things that are happening in schools today. Kids are bringing vapes to school, knives, guns. So I I just think that it's just safer um to ensure that our middle school starting off. Um, is is more secure. Um, and for a variety of reasons, maybe. A student doesn't feel comfortable talking to staff support, but maybe they feel comfortable talking to school support. Uh, I mean, uh, to uh S I R O, as a student resource officer.
Any other comments or questions by any of the committee members? I don't see any hands up on favors, I oppose say no, the eyes have it, motion is carrying. And that completes the section on Mister Rossi's motions.
Thank you.
First off, the next section with a new motion by Ms. Thompson, item six point six. Motion to receive a ninety days report from the interim superintendent to include his district priorities. A list of goals and organizational concerns prior in the next school committee meeting, second by Ms. Mon, Ms. Thompson?
Yes, I mean, I think that this is um, it really kind of speaks for itself. I I know that there were some um. Some things that we're gonna probably talk about a little bit later, according to an entry plan and goals. Um, and I'll kind of speak to it then, but my my hope was to find out literally the ninety day plan as opposed to like general um information, so. But we will talk about it more when Mister Skinner goes over his uh his entry plan and his goals.
Uh, for any other comments or questions by any of the members? I don't see any hands up on favors, I oppose say no, the eyes have it, motion is carrying. The next motion is item six point seven, the motion by Ms. Thompson, motion to call members of the equity subcommittee. And schedule a meeting for the purposes of parsing this aggregated data surrounding already specified areas. Uh, in colon, once dropout rates, failure rates, attendance rates. And Hispanic slash Latinx support needs with some specific district commitments. Second by Ms. Del Rossi, Ms. Thompson?
Yeah, I mean, I think this is we've, we need an equity subcommittee meeting. There's been lots of, you know, asks um in the last few months. And we've kind of gone this way and that way, and there's been a lot of things happening. Um, but the disaggregated data was really um something that. As chief uh chief uh chief schools officer, Mrs. Skinner has had was be was working on. Um, kind of the dropout rates, failure rates, attendance rates and all of that. And then I was really looking forward to in this um meeting, specific date district commitments. Um, so not just like I'm gonna meet with this group or that group, but like literally specific commitments that the district um is ready to roll out.
Well, also, this will be discussed per motion in the equity subcommittee.
Right.
Um, we'll discuss uh during them, all favors, I oppose say no, the eyes have it, motion is carrying. The next motion is item six point eight, the motion by Ms. Mon. To request the administration develop a proposed remote work slash hybrid schedule policy to be presented to the policy subcommittee. Second by Ms. Chen, Ms. Mon.
Thank you very much, Mister Mayor. Um, really just hoping that the administration can come up with a a comprehensive policy. So that there, um, you know, across, I think this impacts central more than certainly our school sites. Where people are required to be on site all the time. Um, but that we have an an actual policy in place that we can point to. So that there is some um consistency uh across central where um, you know, people are have, you know. They can understand what's what's appropriate, what they can ask for, um, and then the the district can make decisions as to what's. Best for the work being done um at central office.
Any other comments or questions by any of the members? I don't see any hands up on favors, I oppose say no, the eyes have it, motion is carrying. That completes all the motion uh for this meeting. The next um section is on subcommittees and. Line item one point one is the Human Resources and Labor Relations Subcommittee. And uh the chairperson is Ms. Mon. Any report, Ms. Mon?
I already presented this report, uh, Mister Mayor, at our last meeting, uh, so this is just an approval of the written minutes.
One for.
Which I would submit for for consideration.
No additional uh comments or a question at this point. The motion uh to accept this report is a proper protest. By Ms. Dory, second by Mister Lee, on the face, I oppose say no, the eyes have it, motion is carrying. The next section on the agenda is section, item number eight, the course of the superintendent. We'll start with equal one, the superintendent's entry and transition. Mister Superintendent?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Um, uh, Mayor, as as the school committee members, um, I'm I'm delighted to have the opportunity to present this to you. It's I I don't uh, I don't suppose it's gonna be helpful for me to re- to to speak through all of what I've already given to you in in written form. But uh I might remark that uh I began with a very different type of entry plan and goals. Uh, and and submitted them first to my coach. I'm not sure if I've mentioned before, but new superintendents now have a coach from the new superintendent's induction program. My coach is a woman called uh Meg Mayo Brown, a former superintendent in Fall River and in Barnstable. And so she worked over the document that I first produced and she guided me to follow uh for for the entry plan. Um, there there's a new superintendent's induction program rubric. And so the plan in front of you, that the entry plan follows that rubric. Um, I might have written it differently otherwise, but it calls for items like data sources, data analysis and so forth. And that is why it is formatted the way that it is. I I am happy to consider it to be a draft. And particularly in light of what Ms. Thompson uh that spoke about, I'm happy to consider it a draft and make some revisions if you'd see that as appropriate.
Back of the superintendent, I think you're leaving, the next item is is the goals, what you mentioned already and you see in the written form. On the question, you want to add anything else? Um, any comments or questions by any of the school committee members? On both equal one or equal two, Mister, Ms. Thompson?
Gee, I feel like I'm talking a lot today. I'll try to make this uh as quick as possible. Um. So obviously, I kind of alluded to the the to the point or to the desire to have something more um specific to the ninety days. A lot of, um, you you gave good narrative about kind of what you were um thinking about as far as your entry plan and your goals. Um, but something for me, I was looking for something more measurable, um, something, and you kind of just alluded to that. Um, something like of more of a rubric style um would be helpful, even though that she told you to go the opposite direction. I think that something that had more of that would be a little bit helpful for just for us to be able to, cause that, you know, at the end of the day, there's an important portion of what we do. Which is kind of being able to evaluate, you know, how things are going. So I think that that would be great and it also helps for us to support the work that's being done. Um, one of the things that I noted in your entry plan, so I'm gonna talk about your entry plan first and then um quickly about the goals. So the entry plan and the core beliefs, was curious about there being something about staff support in that section. Because I know that you've spoken about that and I noted that it's not one of the things that was kind of spelled out specifically. So if you could kind of speak towards, um, or as you're going back, cause I know you said this is gonna be a draft. If you can speak towards, you know, the staff support as one of your core beliefs as well, um, because the other ones are really, really solid.
Thank you. Um, thank you. So, uh, the um, I'm I'm trying to to trying to consider how to uh respond, the the. When I first sent my draft to this coach, I included everything, goals and so on, and I was specifically guided to keep goals separate. And uh and there, so I mentioned that there's this rubric for the entry plan from the new students, uh, new new superintendent's induction program. There's actually guidance on the goals on the Department of Education website, and I was encouraged to follow that guidance. Those goals from the Department of Education website actually encourage you to write goals that are based on the entry plan. It all seems a bit circular to me, right? Because of the guidance that I had. Um, the idea is that the entry plan be focused a lot on inquiry. You're just examining. You're looking at things, you're asking questions and you're trying to learn, and then for the evaluation goals. Those are where the committee uh should should judge my performance and should should hold me accountable for whatever's in those goals. Similar to the entry plan, I'm happy to adjust the goals. Um, but but uh. Um, specific to the question you asked, Ms. Ms. Thompson, uh, around support for teachers, um. I I I firmly believe that uh that that the the first and most uh the highest leverage. Activity we can indulge in in the school department is to support teachers in their professional growth. So that that that's how we encourage teachers to um be effective in the classroom and and for our students to grow. And 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 very much that's part of my plan. Um, it's referred to under um. Part two, I believe it's it's a, no, excuse me, I didn't get that right.
I'm looking at my entry, I'm looking at your entry plan, by the way. I'm not looking at your goals right now. So this was under your core beliefs. Uh, you had five core beliefs, and what I was saying is potentially, I know that you you care about, you know, supporting the staff. And so I was thinking that that should be fall under one of your core beliefs as well, cause it's not listed as such right now.
Understood. Thank you. Yeah, I I will be happy to adjust that. Thank you.
And then, um, the other thing, what was it? So the other thing is in kind of a way, in in in, I was trying to digest the way that it was written, cause I know that everybody has a different style. And now that you're telling us kind of the patterns that you were given, um, it says there, so there are obviously some objectives. In your entry plan that you as a person would like to uphold, the district has and others um that you probably would like to rethink. Um, I'm just curious as to, as you're thinking about the entry plan, was this uh collaborative? Or was this kind of just your thoughts that you were thinking about when you designed the entry plan?
So, um. It was both. Uh, I think it began, uh, I I began by drafting it uh myself, sharing it with my coach, sharing it with some uh colleagues. Whose feedback I um I I value, and I shared it with each of the cabinet members for their feedback.
Okay, that's good because that leads to my my other question, which was about the data analysis, because a lot of it seems that it would be very singular, and I think. Obviously, you have a breadth of experience in your cabinet, and so um being able to like lean on your chiefs as far as getting their lens. All their lens are gonna be different, and that's gonna allow for you to have insight about even how you're collecting the data, what type of data you need to to look for. And so I I didn't notice notice that that was in there, so that's why I wanted to ask um if that was part of your process as well. This is on page four. Um, towards the bottom, we have the data analysis kind of section.
Right, so, um. I think my response to that is 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 the following, that that is this cur- I think my response to that is 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 the following, that that is this curious um uh. Sort of conundrum about being being a superintendent, and this has occurred with other superintendents as well. I'm not going to achieve anything, I'm not going to achieve any of this entry plan or my goals or anything else. Without the input of all the cabinet and all the principals and so forth, right? And so sometimes when you come to like the end of a year and the superintendent uh maybe displays the um, the accomplishments of the school year and so on. They very seldom are like this, the superintendent went on out there and did that specifically him or her self. It's really that the superintendent has uh orchestrated the 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 skills and and the the aptitudes of people in the cabinet and principals and so on. To make this stuff happen in our district. And that's very much true of of data analysis and 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 all the other aspects of my entry plan and my goals. Uh, I I mentioned in the goals, for example, um, air conditioning, right? I don't know about air conditioning, but I I believe we need to plan for that. Um, I mentioned mental health needs because we've. But I I'm I'm very serious about these items, but I and I hope to report back to you that we've made significant progress. But it won't be because Liam Skinner led each and every detail of that work, I certainly will, right? So 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 I'm being, I'm trying to be authentic with you and 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 acknowledge your point, but it will very much involve uh. At least all of the cabinet members and and then many others as well.
Okay, um, and then I'll just ask two more questions so that I'm not um entirely monopolizing. Um, the the list of the data source, resources or sources, are those different than what we're using now or are they are they the same?
They're the same.
Okay, okay.
In in other words, each of those, each of those sources is available to me right now.
Okay.
They exist.
Okay, and then the last question as far as your entry plan on the on the page, on page five. Um, it says, um, you're looking towards, you have four, five and six. A number five, it says what are our biggest opportunities for growth? So by biggest opportunities for growth, are you looking at the ones that are timely, so the timely things that we need to grow? Or are you looking at the things that are, I mean, I'm trying to think, for lack of better word, more cosmetic, that might be more attractive to people to to kind of deal with. But aren't necess, they can be put off, they're not as timely.
So, um, I I'm trying to, I I I'm I'm looking at the document myself, can can you refer me specifically to?
It is on page five, um, so under the data analysis, we go, if you just flip to the next page. It's um, you have four, five and six, and it says, so the first question is what must we protect or sustain in our system? And then the next one says what are our biggest opportunities for growth um as part of your entry plan? I was just curious, when when you're saying that, like, what are your thoughts surrounding that? Coming into this new plan, are you thinking about things that are timely, like things, for example, I think about the schools that are falling apart. Right, that they need our attention, our our specific attention. Um, but there are some other things that could be, you know, more cosmetic, um, but they're not as timely. So that's kind of where I was trying to pick your brain as far as where what you're thinking um in your entry plan. Maybe I shouldn't try to pick your brain, because I saw the smile.
No, yeah, and for for what it's worth, I I I don't know that others on this uh meeting are are enjoying it as much as I am. But but I really appreciate your attention to the detail of the plan. I I I I find that 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 it it it's um, uh, it's it's very helpful. And and I I appreciate your your attending to it. Um, I don't have a specific answer, but what I I I haven't, I I now fingered. Where you're referring to where it says, uh, I'm also going to try to determine our our biggest opportunities for growth. The entry plan, again, take it from an inter inquiry standpoint, will be involving cabinet, will be involving community members, community groups, faith-based groups and so on. Parents uh is is at at schools and so on. Um, and so. It might be that we learn from some data or some surveys that there's an 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 opportunity for growth uh with a particular curriculum, for example, right? And I might advocate for that, but but if I found out that um, you know, that there there are some doors in a in schools that are are not secure. That well, that might be more urgent and I would advocate for that ahead of the curriculum, right? I I don't know what the answer is today, um, but I I I also am committing in this plan to report back to the. It's not once this is approved and once I'm off and running with this plan, it's not just going to stay with me. I intend to report back to the committee um at each stage, what my findings are.
Excellent, and then this is the last thing I'm going to say, I know that Minerva is leaving us, she's already retired. Um, in in your ninety day plan, I didn't see who we're supposed to report our motions to, so if you could let us know that, that'd be also fantastic.
Of course, of course.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Thompson. Any other members have comments or questions on the first two items? I don't see any uh hands up and uh we do have a few more of report from the superintendent. And all of this, we have to see um the documents of each item. Um, just a brief introduction and then if what see if in committee members have comments or questions. See, next one is on the school reopening report, Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is one of the reports that um, Ms. Croco Robirch has taken the lead on. And she has produced the report, I'd like to refer to her and give her an opportunity to to review it and take any questions that the committee members have, Ms. Robirch.
Thank you, Mr. Skinner and Mayor Chow. Um, we are in the thick of things, as you will, in terms of school reopening. There is a short runway ahead of us and a lot of important things to get done in order to be able to welcome kids back to uh clean, fully staffed. Um, and schools ready to go. So in service of that, we've been working on uh six key areas. They include number one administrative staffing and you've already seen some of the products this evening of the those efforts. Uh, the second is school-based personnel staffing, and this is to ensure that there is a qualified teacher uh in every classroom. In every vacant position, along with the appropriate support staff and personnel, including paraprofessionals. The other areas we're working on are facilities preparation, and this is key as uh the superintendent Skinner just uh remarked. That things like a broken door that could pro- propose a safety um concern or whatnot. Um, the fourth area is technology deployment, we want to make sure all of our technology is ready to go on day one. Uh, the fifth is curriculum provisioning and finally, the big one is transportation, um, along with uh. Making sure our buildings are ready, we have to make sure kids can get to school. Um, so you've already been introduced to the principals, but we've hired a cadre of assistant principals to backfill some internal promotions. Um, and fill some some uh vacancies. So we're excited to welcome Duroth Yan to the Shaughnessy Elementary School as assistant principal. Uh, we will be welcoming an experienced assistant principal, Maureen Wardenalt at the Riley Elementary School this year. Uh, the Lincoln Elementary School, we're welcoming Carrie Anne Driscoll, who is a returning teacher. Uh, prior to being an assistant principal, uh, was a longtime Lowell teacher and is coming back to the district in a new role. Uh, we have another promotion of an internal candidate, Victor Alves, who is a teacher at the Daily Middle School, who's stepping up to an assistant principal role there. Uh, the Bailey Elementary School is welcoming Ali Alicia Silvestroni. Who is a current literacy specialist who will be stepping up, so lots of internal promotions as you can see here. And then at Pine Arts, the interim role uh is going to Laurie Burnham, uh, who is a longtime teacher and administrator in the Lawrence Public Schools. We do have two key uh administrative positions that are open at at this time, though, one is the associate head of schools at Lowell High School. Now that position has been vacant and they have gone through hiring processes and uh at the end of the first. Series of that process did determine that there was a an ideal candidate, um, but that did not come to fruition. And therefore it's been reposted, um, and there has been a limited number of candidates for that key position. And the other one that is just ending its posting is the early childhood center coordinator, that was a newly approved. Position at the last committee meeting, so we are waiting out the process with that. Um, but a uh screening committee is forming at this time. And there is a contingency plan in place to make sure that there is supervision um in preparation to open the Cardinal O'Connell. Uh, other things that are happening, are we welcomed over seventy teachers last week at New Teacher Academy over uh O'Leary Library in UMass Lowell? This week, there's been a major focus on paraprofessional hiring. We've added lots of programming this year, additional substantially separate programs, all of which come with a significant number of paraprofessionals. And through site-based budgeting, we also had schools uh uh and increased the number of paraprofessional positions. To provide direct support to classroom teachers in different ways. Um, so we had a large number of vacancies, about sixty-four paraprofessional vacancies as of the end of last week. Um, so the focus this week has been on hiring for paraprofessionals. Um, and at last count, we've been able to cut that number down to about twenty-five. Um, so we are making progress and uh uh we had a huge hiring event last night that was wildly successful. It yielded us twenty-eight hires for those vacant positions in just a two-hour window of time. So that was a tremendous effort by the Human Resources Department to pull that off on short notice. This coming week, we're going to focus on tutor hiring and continuing to uh fill those hard-to-fill positions, and there are some. The teacher shortage is very real and I don't want to um paint any picture, one thing you'll find about me is that I'm very transparent. Um, and and we do have about twenty-five teaching positions currently that principals are working to fill. Um, math and science in grades five all the way through grade twelve are posing a particular challenge right now. And you may have seen a lot of um activity on social media through the Lowell Public School's social media site. Um, we're posting on Indeed, uh, Dr. Hall and his office are are leaving no stone unturned to get us candidates. Um, into the hands of the principals who are the hiring managers for their school. Um, ELA and ESL in grades five to twelve continue to be a bit challenging, as well as special education at all levels. Um, and so uh Dr. Hall's office has been working closely with our union partners. Um, and uh within, like I said, that all the resources of their department to get, to cast a wide net. Um, and continue to attract good candidates for these positions. Um, in terms of facilities preparation, uh, we are in the final push. The goal has been to have every school and classroom accessible, starting on Monday. We know that there are lots of staff members that like to come in and get their classroom set up. Um, and we're despite having program at every single school for summer programming this year. Um, we are very much on track for that to happen. We do have a few classrooms at schools that ran programming into mid-August. Um, that won't be ready by Monday, um, but there's a plan in place to support those schools with either high needs in terms of a short runway for cleaning. Or who may be down a custodian for any reason, um, and Dr. Hall also is um actively monitoring all of those areas. We had some capital projects again uh at that affected the exterior uh areas of some of our school. These are all improvements, they're great things to have, we have walkways at the Moody and the Cardinal that will be on track. Nation at the start of the school year, parking lots and driveway repaving over at Sullivan, Riley and Pine Arts. Um, and everything is on track to have those projects completed for reopening. Um, in addition, we're working on some elevator repair concerns. Um, at particularly at the Robinson Middle School right now and ensuring there's a contract in place for that work to be done. And done before the start of the school year and also an electrical panel over at the Merklin School that has had some work done on it. And that also needs to be ready to start the school year. Chief Academic Officer, uh, Robin Desmond oversees technology. And her department has done a phenomenal job of ensuring that there are tickets, new staff accounts, devices, everything soup to nuts, ready to go. The technology department has been turning out um candidates, new candidates and getting laptops and accounts into their hands at a rapid pace. And all of the curriculum maps and materials uh have been provided or on their read to schools. And then transportation, I think you started seeing some messaging also on the Facebook page recently. Additional messaging will be coming out um via connected and through all of our communication channels. But K to four bus passes are due to be po- uh mailed out on August twenty-third. The middle school bus lookup tool will be live and updated by four P M on the twenty-second. Um, the reminder to those watching in the public is that the lunch ID is the um search name. And it's uh the eight-digit birth date, you need to look up your child's bus pass. Um, when the kids log into their devices, they use their six-digit birth date, so they're very accustomed to putting in their student ID and then their six-digit birth date. But for the bus look-up tool, they've got to use the entire four-digit um year of birth. Um, and we are projecting from um Mr. Dakota's office that uh we're looking at level service funding in terms of um our level service. In terms of providing the number of buses, number of routes, et cetera, as there were last year. Um, so we're on track for a great year ahead, we're working through some of those last facilities issues and hiring issues. Um, so that we'll be fully staffed and ready to go for day one. Love to answer any questions from the committee.
Thank you, Ms. Robirch. Any comments or questions from any of the members? I don't see um any hands up, could report, Ms. Robirch would go to the next report on the uh on the agenda. The next one is the Family Resource Center update, Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, we are aware that the 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 committee's uh desire for the Family Resource Center registrations to go very smoothly. We're also very cognizant of the uh the usual rush that we face at this time of the year between now and mid-September. And Ms. Phillips, uh, uh, Chief Equity Officer has been very busy along with the Director of the Family Resource Center. Providing for um the 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 coming rush that we have and and Ms. Phillips uh has an update for you, Ms. Phillips, please.
Uh, thank you, um, to our school committee members. So I provided you with a memo um on important updates happening at the Family Resource Center. Um, you'll recall that in February, we did introduce a new coordinator of the Family Resource Center. Um, Abesola Ogunsayi, and she has been working with her team. Um, on implementing this school assignment, school registration process. Um, for her first time as well as with a relatively new team. Um, in order to support the volume of of um. School assignment applications coming in, um, the Family Resource Center has extended its hours. Um, beginning next week, four to six P M, this is in addition to um an appointment system. Where families who can't meet that timeline um can meet with with um a family liaison to support their needs. Um, so that'll be beginning August twenty-first through the first week of school. Um, additionally, there will be two Saturday sessions on this upcoming Saturday, as well as the Saturday right before the start of the school year. Um, we are also setting up a temporary call center. Um, we're very well aware that the volume of calls increases to the Family Resource Center, not only for school assignment. But also including transportation, school schedules, um immunization support. Any type of phone call related to school reopening. Um, often comes to the Family Resource Center as a parent's first point of contact. And um, I also wanted to mention that we, in addition to school assignments, we have received. Close to five hundred school transfer requests, um, transfers are approved per the policy, at least one transfer per year. Uh, but it is based on space being available in a grade or a school. We did send a communication to the five hundred, almost five hundred applicants. Letting them know that we will inform families who have been approved of a transfer um via email. Um, and and letter, however, if families are not approved of a transfer. Um, they should anticipate um going to their um previous school or their feeder pattern. Um, middle school at the start of the school year. Uh, so I wanted to mention that um we do currently have many students who have not received. Medical clearance to us to attend school. Uh, we currently have about two hundred students who that is the final piece waiting for their school assignment. Um, in order to address these numbers of students, we have partnered with the Lowell Community Health Center. To offer um two immunization clinics. Um, one took place this past um Saturday, the next one is on August twenty-sixth. However, families do need an appointment in order to go, because there are only ninety slots for each of these immunization clinics. We're looking at whether they'll be able to offer clinics after the school year begins. Um, I also received a communication today from uh Ms. Beth Moffett. That the um, I think the Lowell General Immunization Clinic has also extended. Um, days and hours to address the numbers of students needing to be medically cleared. We are planning to um assign students to their schools. Um, you know, in the next coming, in the upcoming days, even though they have not received medical clearance. However, we will work with schools um to ensure that students are not attending school until they receive. The um, the medical clearance, however, we want to make sure that that families do know where their children are going. Uh, we want to make sure that they're able to request transportation, so that at the point that they are cleared, they're able to um begin school right away. So those are the updates that I wanted to highlight, but I'm happy to answer any additional questions. And the school committee members may have. um the school committee members may have.
Back to Ms. Phillips for that detailed report, report and update. Any comments or questions by any of the members? Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. I just have a couple of quick ones. Um, Ms. Phillips, could you, uh, so it's two hundred is the number right now of students who are awaiting vaccination confirmation?
That, that is correct, and we, we are processing two hundred more students. And I'm confident that in that additional two hundred students, we're going to have students who aren't cleared.
Sure. Okay. So would it be possible, I, I, and again, you know, this is just something we track, you know, obviously. Um, so at our next meeting, then we'll get in, I'm assuming we'll get another update. So we'll see exactly where we're at. I mean, I do think that with um, you know, obviously the Lowell Community Health Center and, and Lowell General are great partners. It's great that they're extending this uh opportunities for families. Um, so I'm, I'm hoping that when we, when we get our next report, we'll, we'll see that the numbers have gone down despite the increased number of kids coming through the door. So thank you very much for the update.
Ms. Dory?
Uh, thank you. I, I'm, my concerns are on a similar track as uh this committee knows. We've had a couple of years of really extraordinarily high numbers of students still not able to attend school um even as late as into October, and we're school is just two weeks away. I'm just trying to drill down to find out where the, those students are coming from. When you talk about that for the month of August, you had um four hundred walk-ins. So those are people registering for the first time? Or are they uh registering to go to, you know, they're brand new to the Lowell school system, four hundred new people in August? Is that correct?
Um, so it's, it's a combination of new students to the district. Um, families also walk in to fill out their transportation forms online. So a lot of families are using our computers in the Family Resource Center. We also provide um job permits for um, for students. So those are usually the, the three largest reasons someone walks into the Family Resource Center.
Got it. So that four hundred is not all new entering students. So the two hundred families that we know of, and that number might grow as you're addressing the walk-ins that came in in August. Those two hundred uh new students, are they pre-K and kindergarten students primarily? Because I would think a student, unless they're a com- a newcomer to the country, if they've been in another school district, all their immunization records and would be have been verified prior to coming to Lowell, right? So of the two hundred, how many of them are pre-K and kindergarten, first time enrolers? Even just pre-K a first time enrolers kindergarten, if they'd been with us for pre-K, it wouldn't be their first time.
Hmm. So um, we have one hundred and twenty-six kindergarten or incoming um kindergarten students. And my understanding is that there are new immunizations between pre-K and kindergarten. Um, or it may be between four years old and five years old that you need to get an additional um additional shots. So we do have one hundred and twenty-six K and then the remaining um seventy-four are other grades.
Other grades, but probably pre-B K?
Um, I, I can't say if it's pre-K, um, but no, it's not kindergarten.
So the reason I'm asking is, you know, we've done this, uh, and this has all been in the last few years that we changed the po- the registration process and had these multiple um, uh, I forget what to call them. Lotteries. And, you know, right up until, when was the last one? The beginning of August?
Hmm.
And, you know, we have had meetings where we have the nurses come forward and say, it's just too difficult for us to process all these at the end of the summer, but when many of them are off, they're, most of them are off the summer. They wanted to go back to the earlier registration time. So I'm, I'm trying to dig down and see if we, we gave another year of this late registration through the summer thing. And I, I need to know like the data to support that whether that is still a problem for us. Uh, because we're scrambling and I think it's wonderful that the Community Health Center and that the Lowell General are going to provide these uh services, because I know right now to get a doctor's appointment, you can be waiting months and to have a child out of school, even two days to miss the beginning of school, uh, it's not great. So if for the next meeting, if we could get a more specific on how many of these people that these chi- children that don't have the immunizations were people coming in later on in the summer that maybe could be avoided by going back to, you know, the policy of trying to get everybody registered in the, in the late spring like we used to do. That would be very helpful for me if we could have that data. And then the only thing I want, the other thing I want to mention, I think it's great you're doing Saturdays. We had been asking, I know I've had this motion on for a couple of years to extend the hours at the Family Resource Center anyway, to have one night for our families who just can't get there uh before five o'clock because of war commitments. So I'm wondering if these extended hours just, have we gone back to that late Thursday that we used to have, or are we just doing this as a temporary this time of year?
So um, to respond to your first question, I don't believe our challenge right now is reading the immunization cards. It's actually completing the shots. So in prior years, we did have challenges reading the immunization cards and, and, and knowing who was in compliance or non-compliance. Right now, it's a matter of, of the families actually being able to get those, those appointments. So, so we're trying to address that with the immunization clinics. So that's something we can reflect on and see how we can do that differently next year. But I'll still continue to look at the data and see what I can provide for you.
And, and to that point, I, I think that's great, you know, to be able to make that distinguishing factor, whether it's having the information correctly, being able to read it, or whether it's getting the shot. But either way, the sooner we get the information, the sooner families know you need to do this, this and this, it gives us more flexibility in getting the shots. I don't want to get to a situation where we have, you know, a bunch of students who aren't able to attend school because they, they don't have their shots. That, that's what I'm trying to avoid. Uh, but go ahead. What was the, the second part about the hours?
Yeah, the second part is around the hours. Um, we do offer appointments. Um, and our family liaisons have, have supported families in the past at different hours whenever they need the support. We can look at an extended evening hour, you know, and collect the data on our families coming on that, you know, on that additional hour. Um, that is something that um would be overtime for our staff or it would be.
It wasn't before. I'm not sure why it would be. We, we did this before and it was, uh, Ms. Martin, do you recall that?
Absolutely. It was just the way the schedules were built, so they were.
And that, and that, I mean, I've been asking for that and getting votes for it. The committee as a whole, the majority wanted to go back to that flexible schedule that we had, and it was, it was cost neutral. Because if you were going to stay that Thursday, you were going to stay uh late, you got to come in late that morning. That was how it was, I, I think, if I recall correctly. But that's what, I mean, we had motions to move forward with doing that. Um, so we're not doing that. This is just uh right now, a couple of extra days.
We're, we're doing appointments upon request, so there's no barrier to an evening. Um, you know, to evening service. However, we can discuss, you know, an extended day. Um, we can track the data to see if families are using that day. Um, but right now, our liaisons are um on flex schedules. They're able to support families um different times of the evening um based on family need.
Thank you. So I look forward to getting, as Ms. Martin said, the follow-up report that'll, you know, drill down a little bit more on terms of those numbers of students that are, were not able to start on the first day because of the immunization records. Thank you.
And now the comments or questions? Ms. Chun?
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And um, um, my question is, um, I'm assuming they run the same, um, not, for me, not about vaccination, but um, I have been asked by parents, um, they have not received from the high school level, um, new entry to our district and they have not received their child, um, uh, my goodness, class list. Um, is there a direct line that I can um request to send?
Of the high school?
I'm sorry.
Uh, Ms. Phillips, was there a question directly to Ms. Phillips?
Uh, yes. Or um, Mr. Skinner's, that's fine too. Um, how can parents reach out to any of our administration in terms of um class, uh, um, class list for um freshman academy? Thank you.
So uh, it, it, first of all, this freshman academy, they're welcome to reach out directly to the high school. Um, if uh, i- if that's not satisfied, if it's about enrollment or registration, they can reach out to um Family Resource Center. At any rate, Ms. Chun, if you're aware of somebody who sought information and having a hard time getting it, I'd like to know and, and please feel free to refer them to the superintendent's office. I'll be happy to help them.
Sure. Thank you.
Mr. Lei?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, history have shown that every uh uh, August and September, we have very high number of uh enrollments. And I expect that this year may be the same. And I know the um, Ms. Phillips, the Family Resource Centers uh have a new leadership and also uh have maybe a brand new team. So um, just wanna say that uh, uh, please feel free to uh reach out to us uh if you feel overwhelmed or something need to be done. Uh, I'm, I have confident that you know what to do. Uh, just wanna uh toss it out so that uh, that you know that we, we're here to uh, to help you assist uh so that students can uh, can uh go to school on time. Thank you.
Mr. Lei, I'd like to personally thank you for the offer. It's very generous of you. And uh, i- in that spirit, you should know that the different departments at Central Office are working collaboratively um on, on, on particular issues for, for one particular department, many departments can collaborate. And that's the case with Family uh Resource Center. The, 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 the rush that we'll face at Family Resource Center is not only uh the responsibility of Ms. Phillips' office, but all of us. And we're tackling it as a collaborative uh issue this year, uh, but, but we'll be happy to reach out to you as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Skinner.
Yeah, uh, Ms. Dory, uh, actually, um, I, I'm gonna have Ms. Thompson because I haven't spoken yet. Uh, Ms. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so first of all, I just want to say thank you, Ms. Phillips. I've actually been hearing good things about what's been going on. Um, so that's uh, um, amazing. Um, quick, top, couple, I guess, quick questions. So first of all, as far as who you're seeing coming in most recently, what is the language that you're seeing most recently? I'm kind of curious about that. And um, also of the, of the remaining people that are um, are looking to get vaccinations or what have you, are they a specific um demographic that you're seeing? Like, is it a specific country of people that are coming in or specific demographic? I know you spoke to a lot of them being the kindergarten age, but I was just curious about those two things.
Hmm. Um, thank you, Ms. Thompson. So we are continuing to uh receive a lot of families um who are Portuguese-speaking families, um Spanish-speaking families. Um, we are also receiving um many Haitian students, which is, which is different this year. Um, and I believe we're also receiving um students from Ecuador and Guatemala. I can't say um at this moment who is having trouble with, with immunizations, but that's something that I can um definitely look more closely into.
Thank you.
Ms. Dory?
Uh, thank you, Anna. Just one more quick qu- a follow-up question. Um, I know we have a number of students that are waiting for the immunization stuff to go through. How many students um do not have assigned schools yet?
So the students who have not received medical clearance today has not been assigned. However, because we're about a week and a half out of school, um, we intend to start assigning students, but not before talking with um, with our schools and school leaders so that they can plan and make sure that um that we have a system in place for assigning non-compliant students um and ensuring that they're not going to come to school.
So that number was two hundred. So we have two hundred students who haven't been assigned. All the other students, K to twelve, have their school assignments then, unless they have some uh medical documentation that needs to be completed. Is that what you're saying? It's only the two hundred without the documentation?
Yes, anyone with a complete, anyone with a complete file is assigned.
Okay, thank you.
And if I can mention, that's, you know, I don't know what might have happened yesterday or today, but we are up to date. If your file is complete, we are up to date.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Phillips. And uh, Ms. Dory, I still see your, the yellow hand uh parked up, so. Uh, so, well, thank you. And we'll go to the uh, the next report. And uh, we do have a few more reports that have to follow. So maybe just, again, we obviously all the documents in the file already, and we just get a brief summary from the uh, the, the report, who, um, person who wrote the report. And then we just go straight to the, the committee members for comments and questions. Uh, the next one is on the August Leadership Academy Report. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, we could spend quite a long time on this, but we, we won't say. I understand that the, the, uh, the, the need to, that discretion of the time. Uh, I'd like to just say that uh this event that you've received a report on uh is a really important one for us because it has to do with orienting and training our leaders as we go into a new school year. Traditionally, it's a three-day event, and that's the case this year. This year, um, Ms. Desmond, Ms. Phillips and Ms. Crocker uh worked through collaboratively with um a facilitator, a consultant from a group called Itchund to plan the events. You have a report that was provided to you by um Ms. Crocker Roboche uh that outlines the various agenda items for the, the three days. And I'll stop there and take any questions that members might have.
Any comments or questions by the, any of the committee members? Uh, I don't see any hands up. Uh, thank you, Mr. Roboche for the, for the report. Uh, as you can see, I don't know if my camera can pick it up. It is a very thick and detailed report, so there's a lot of work that have gone into this um by, by everyone. So thank you for that. Uh, if there are no comments or, or questions on this report, we'll go to the next report uh which is on the Lowell High, the update on Lowell High School scholarships. Mr. Superintendent?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. In our last meeting, I believe it was uh July nineteenth, Ms. Thompson uh had some on so, so, some qu- questions of the items that were unfulfilled in terms of Lowell High School scholarships. I spoke with Mr. Fiatto about that and he produced a memo that you received in your packet. Um, so I, I could take questions on that. Um, on behalf of Ms. Thompson, I also want to mention, we have a report of motions a little bit further on in our meeting. Um, and uh, I noticed that there are also two motions uh still pending that ha- have to do with scholarship items. So it is possible, despite the efforts of Mr. Fiatto to produce that uh document that you've received, that there are still questions uh about scholarships. And so I'm happy to sort of take that all together if, if that uh suits you or take any questions.
Any comments or questions uh for now for the discussion section? I'll see any hands up. Um, uh, thank you, Mr. Superintendent for uh that quick report. Uh, the next items, uh, the next two items uh on the, these are the motion response. Eight point seven is the response to motion ten CFO of five seven ton, five seventeen twenty-three by Ms. Dory regarding community schools. Ms. Dory?
Sorry. Um, I thank you for that update. Uh, it's fine.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Dory. No other comments by any of the members. We'll go, we take on the next motion uh response. This is a vocal response to the motion by Mr. Lei regarding school crosswalks. Uh, any further comments, Mr. Lei?
No, Mr. Mayor.
If, if I may, Mr. Mayor.
Bye. Go, go ahead, Mr. Skinner.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Lei's motion called for um crosswalks to be repainted and so on before the start of school. Um, as of Friday, when the packet was put together, I didn't have sufficient detail to put together a memo on that, but so, and that's why I included a verbal response. Since that time, I do have information, Mr. Lei, uh, that you may be interested in. Uh, the eight schools are having new. Uh, the eight schools are having new um, ADA compliant sidewalks and ramps. The crosswalks that are adjacent to those sidewalks will be completed by the DDPW using ADA funds. Uh, before school starts, ADA referring to Americans with disabilities. So that's eight schools, um, overall, a thousand crosswalks are being painted throughout the city uh, by the end of August. They're a little bit behind due to the weather conditions over the summer, a lot of wet weather, um. Parking lot paving is going on at three schools, um, and their remaining schools, I've been assured. Will be lined by the start of school pending weather. And uh, so so that's an update, Mr. Lei, that 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 you're, um, I I should also mention that. Uh, Mr. Lei's uh, motion asked for the superintendent to work with the city, as obviously the city is responsible for this work. I found the city manager and the city uh, officials to be very cooperative and 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 very um. Uh, we we worked very well with us uh, on this particular motion, and I think, Mr. Lei, it's uh, y- your your wishes have been satisfied to date.
Thank you, Mr. Mr. Skinner, appreciate Superintendent, thank you.
No other comments or questions on this, we're now going to go the next one, um, eight point nine. Uh, the uh, report on motions, Mr. Superintendent. Uh, Ms. Mon, uh, yeah, you re- you had something on the previous one or on this current one?
On this one, the the superintendent can start.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So, um. There is a a a a standing agreement that that the report of motions is reported out to the committee, I think, once per quarter. I don't think it was quite uh, time for it to be introduced just yet, but I asked for it to be on tonight's agenda because. As a new new uh, interim superintendent, I understand that there's sometimes been a practice where the committee will consider. All old motions, so I'm not, I'm not specifically asking for you to dismiss all the old motions. But I wonder if the committee might take it under consideration, which of the old motions, it it I I I I'm taking. Responses to motions is just a really serious responsibility of mine, that I'm going to take very seriously on the behalf of the committee members. Responding to each one of your motion requests. Uh, but 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 some of them, as I reviewed them, and before I get into it, with you know, responding to them with bigger and 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 issuing um. Uh, directives that we do so, um, I wanted you to consider, so one of them, for instance, is two years old. And others are more than a year old, uh, that it it boils down to, would the committee like me? To go right ahead and provide responses to each of the outstanding motions? Or might we consider some sort of a a um, a collapse or 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 re- refresh?
Right, uh, go to Ms. Mon.
So the short answer is yes. Um, we need to, we need to get this report under control. I've gone through, I have eight motions that can be eliminated off the bat, that are my own. I do think that each member um, would be able to go through and kind of eliminate the ones that have been responded to, that we've moved past. Um, and I think that would really get us, you know, we're at thirty-two pages right now, I that that seems like a bit much. So, I mean, what I would recommend, uh, Superintendent Skinner would be. I'm happy to email to you the the eight that I'm, that I think should be taken off, that I'm responsible for. If every other member could maybe do that, um, and I would also, and I would make this in the form of a motion. I only saw a couple, but I I think any motions that are there from previous terms, from members who are no longer on the committee. Um, should just be eliminated. Uh, if it's something of interest that a current committee member has, they can make a new motion and start the the process all over again. Um, but I think just to kind of clean this up, I mean, this was meant to be a working document that kind of kept us all honest, and it's just. Kind of grown out of control, so I applaud your efforts to try and prune it down.
Okay, what what, let's go start, well, uh, a motion approved by Ms. Mon to eliminate all the motions. That were requested by former members. Uh, basically, members who are currently on the school committee to be admitted. Second by, I'm sure, um, Madam Secretary could work better, uh, but we get the gist of it, um, second by Ms. Dory. Um, all in favor, say aye, opposing, no, ayes, have it.
Aye.
Just carry, um, I know that Mr. Lei also want to speak on this uh, motion report, Mr. Lei.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, on top of that, I seen some uh, motions that are completed, and they've been completed a while ago. So I don't know if we uh, can eliminate some of those too. I don't know if there's a rule, how many months you wanna have it on there be- before you could take it out, but I've seen a lot of them uh, completed and still on there.
Absolutely, I think anything that's completed should go.
Uh, Ms. Dory.
Uh, thank you, Anna, I want to say, um, I definitely agree with that, if if you want, and if. The superintendent would be more comfortable with an email from each of us saying which ones of our completed motions we're fine with removing. Um, I know in the past, sometimes it would say completed, and it hadn't been completed fully or. A- as the committee member expected, so that would be in line with Ms. Martin had said earlier about an email doing that. Uh, one of the things I'd like to highlight is motions that have been longstanding and not acted on. Uh, and the one that jumps right out at me, because we just had that conversation, uh, is number seven. The Family Resource Center hours, where I had that motion back in September of twenty-two, so a year ago. Asking to return to their rotation, rotating basis hours. Um, I had a motion, I think it it's going on three years now, about a mental health audit. Uh, that never was fulfilled, uh, these, and I can go through this and include it in the email, but I just for tonight. Um, I thought I'd like to express, you know, those are ones that come right to mind that I had, um, that were not fulfilled.
So, uh, Ms. Dory, I appreciate your comment, and uh, I appreciate all the comments made. Um, Ms. Martin, I think it it uh, maybe used the phrase cleaning it up. Uh, I I I think I'd like to take the opportunity to have each member review their own, and and nobody take away your motion. Uh, but 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 um, but whichever ones remain will be taken seriously and will be responded to promptly.
Okay, thank you.
Now, the comments and questions by any of the members? Uh, I I just wanna add to that, uh, we're on the right track, uh, thank you for your concern, Mr. Skinner, bringing up forefront and. Uh, Ms. Mon's uh, comment, uh, there there are a lot to take it, and then there are gonna be many uh, more new motions, so. I think uh, the upcoming motion, the current motions and the future motions are probably um, most relevant to what's going on now. Um, so maybe in addition to um, the most, your current motions, or the motions that in the past that you made. That um, you want to uh, take out of the uh, report, that'd be great. But also maybe highlight uh, a few motions that are still really uh, important to you. That uh, you feel still be re- relevant and should be addressed. Uh, maybe highlight those, so that way the superintendent could address those uh, motions. And of course, even though motions are made in the past, and after, and you feel that uh, they are important to you. Um, there's no reason why you cannot make them as a new motion again, uh, to be presented, so I mean, all this thing, we're working together. To make sure the motions and issues are are relevant um, for this school year. Uh, so thank you for that, uh, Mr. Superintendent. Um, no other comments or questions, we'll go to. Um, I think that we, that completes all the report, not even a motion to accept. The report from a superintendent, eight point one through eight point nine, as you put.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me, please, I believe there's one more, it's a standard report of home education provided by Ms. Desmond, number uh, eight, eight point ten.
We'll take that on the on the next one, we're now just dealing with eight point one to eight point nine, that's a separate item, um, uh, following that, I see it on my agenda. Um, so we just need a uh, a motion to accept a positive progress by Ms. Dory. Second by Mr. Lei on fans, I post say no.
Aye.
Motion is carried, um, so the next line items, eight point ten, which is the home education, Mr. Superintendent.
Understood, excuse me, um, thank you, I believe it's a standard uh, periodic report that Ms. Desmond put together. Um, if the committee members have any questions, uh, you may put them to Ms. Desmond.
Any comments or questions on the home education by any of the members? I don't see.
Accept.
Was that by, I couldn't see who it was.
Stacy.
Uh, by Ms. Thompson, second by Ms. Turner, Madam Secretary, roll call please.
Ms. Darty?
Yes.
Mr. Lei?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi? Mr. Rossi?
This new, she might be answering, but she's mute. Doctor Hawke, unmute, Mr. Rossi. It's okay, did uh.
Don't say six years, one absent.
Wonderful, thank you, uh, the next section of the new businesses, uh, we start at nine point one. Low high school graduation policy change, uh, request, um, is this gonna go to the uh, Policy Subcommittee? Uh, Mr. Superintendent, any any comments on this?
Um, I I don't know whether it goes to Policy Subcommittee, it's certainly a possibility, uh, M- Mr. Mayor, I'll take the wishes of the committee on it. I also have um, Ms. Desmond prepared to speak, and she has also arranged for uh, Ms. Camping to be present. Who um, has put together much of the information that might be of interest to the committee.
Okay, I'm not questioning with this, uh, Ms. Mon, go ahead.
I would just say, and I and I know we've already sent something to the Policy Subcommittee, and I don't even know if I'm on it, so I'm sorry if I'm giving other people stuff. Um. But I do think if we're gonna get into this, I'd I'd rather not have the conversation here, then have it in policy, then bring it back to have it here. And I apologize, I'm looking particularly at you, Lauren, that you spent your whole night here, I apologize for that. Um, but I I think it is a policy that needs to be kind of presented and and discussed before we move forward.
Wonderful motion by Ms. Mon to report this to the Policy Subcommittee, second by Ms. Dory on fans, I post say no, I said it, motion is carried. Uh, the next line item is the low public schools handbook update. Mr. Skinner, with the Superintendent.
Thank you, Mayor, um, most of the handbook updates this time are uh, date changes and so forth that are uh, uh, standard. Just converting from one school year to another, um, Ms. Phillips has provided you with with the handbook memo to describe the changes that that are being sought. Um, Ms. Phillips is available to take any questions members have.
Any comments or questions by any of the members?
Just that this was a great way to present it, and I appreciated it, thank you very much, getting the kind of executive summary at the front with all the actual changes. Was very welcome, thank you.
Ms. Thompson?
Um, just one thing I noted, under the student procedure matters section, there wasn't anything about the dashboard. And so, um, if we could have something, so I didn't see, and maybe I missed it, because it is a little bit of a thick document. So I might, I may have missed it, um, but I didn't see anything about um, the bullying, discrimination, racism dashboard, so that parents. Could know, I you know, how to access it and other procedure for accountability purposes. So, it might be somewhere else, but I think that it should also live there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll make a note of that, uh, Mr. Superintendent and Ms. Phillips. Any other comments or questions on this line item? I don't see any hands up. Uh, need a motion to approve the low public schools handbook update by Mr. Lei, second by Ms. Mon, Madam Secretary, roll call please.
Ms. Darty?
Yes.
Mr. Lei?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
The.
Mr. Rossi? Seven years.
The next line item is the budget transfer in the amount of sixty-four thousand, three hundred seventy-nine dollars. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, I understand that this is a relatively standard matter, schools have uh, the uh, purview to move. Items between different light items within a school budget. Um, in this case, it's a new principal, Mr. McCrevan, coming to the uh, Shaughnessy School. And uh, deciding to to have it's some different priorities, and uh, he's worked with Ms. Turner. To put together the memo that you received, Ms. Turner is available to take any further questions you have.
Any comments or question for the Superintendent or Ms. Turner? I don't see any. Would approve by Mr. Lei, second by Ms. Turner, Madam Secretary, roll call please.
Ms. Darty?
Yes.
Mr. Lei?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi? Mr. Rossi?
Madam Secretary, do you have majority pass?
Yes.
Thank you.
Six years, one absent.
The next line item is nine point four, of the low high school athletics, we'll put the three uh, we request, we are taking that item in the beginning. Uh, we now go to item section ten, convention conference request. When was out of state and overnight travel request, low high school choir to travel to. So, Ohio, any comments or questions by any of the committee members? I don't see any hands up, need a motion to approve the convention conference.
A quick question, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Lei, did you uh, have a question or comment?
Uh, a comment, uh, is that four, gonna be like forty thousand dollars? Because a hundred students, uh, four hundred dollars each?
Mr. Superintendent?
I'm trying to see which uh, wh- where Mr. Lei is referring to, are you referring, Mr. Lei, to the document that Mr. Fiatto provided that's linked on the agenda? Um, let me see.
It's four hundred each, each student pays for themselves.
And that's, uh, yeah, that's what I wanted to know, uh, yes, it is from Mr. Ma- uh, Fiatto. That um, gonna cost four hundred dollars. And a total of a hundred students, nine adults, so gonna be. Yeah, at least forty thousand dollars, and I wonder if that comes uh, come out of uh, all of them come. I know it says some of them come from fundraising and. And individuals, but it doesn't say that no cost to the school.
That's correct, Mr. Lei, you make a good point, uh, Ms. Ms. Desmond, I think, has some more information to share, Ms. Desmond?
Yes, thank you, uh, Mr. Skinner, yes, the um, the trip will be paid by students and through fundraising. Um, Mr. Lei, the only cost that would be to the school department potentially would be. The cost to cover uh, the teachers who were attending, uh, the chaperones, um, the sub. Coverage uh, for that, and that would be absorbed by the school professional development budget.
Just add, wanna add the comment that a hundred student, that's a lot of students going on the trip.
Mm-hmm.
Anyway, thank you, Ms. Desmond.
Thank you.
Okay, that motion was moved approved by Ms. Thompson, um, second by Ms. Mon. Madam Secretary, roll call please.
Ms. Darty?
Yes.
Mr. Lei?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi? Mr. Rossi? Six years, one absent.
Thank you, Madam Secretary, um, that completes the meeting uh, for tonight, before we take a motion to adjourn. Any announcement by any of the members? Um, just a a quick announcement, uh, this weekend is a lot of things going on. Uh, one of the biggest event that we have in the city is the Low Southeast Asian Water Festival. I encourage everyone um, to come and enjoy the festivities. Um, there'll be uh, many, many uh, people from around the country, uh, will be visiting more this weekend. Uh, with that said, I need a motion to adjourn by.
Mr. Mayor, uh, are we going to executive session or tour now?
Uh, yes, we are, that's that's a separate meeting, um, but you brought up, um, you know, after this meeting, we'll take a uh, five minutes break. It's nine eighteen, I say nine twenty, and we'll sign on, I believe it's the same link. Um, to the exec session, but let's get.
It's a different link, Mia Chow.
It's a link?
Yeah, it's a different link.
Okay, well, we'll figure it out, uh, after we adjourn from from this meeting. Um, need a motion to adjourn, was it by Ms. Thompson, second by Ms. Dory. On a famous eye, post say no, I said it, motion is carried, thank you, thank you everyone for participating in this meeting, uh, both on Zoom and from home, thank you.
Thank you. What link are we going in?
It's in your calendar.
Thank you, Mayor.
Uh, Dominic, you can get it on the executive session agenda.